Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole Meeting. The meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the members of the City Council are present. And while we traditionally do not begin a meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance under Committee rules, tonight we'd like to very much, because we've had some... Hold on, don't tell me. Girl Scouts.
Yeah.
How many showed up tonight? I mean, like, forty-five? Unbelievable. So, and you represent most of the schools. That's amazing. So, ranging in age from...
Uh, like, first grade after high school.
Yeah. Oh, my God. And I want to thank you all for bringing cookies. I see nothing up here. Ladies, would you do us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? We will follow your lead, okay?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Are there any questions from any of the Girl Scouts for any member of the Council before we begin the meeting? No? Good. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, item 3A is irrelevant this evening, so we will... But we do have to approve the minutes, so item 2 is to approval of a Committee of the Whole minutes from February 29, 2019. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Swanson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. All in favor of approving the minutes from the February 25 Committee of the Whole Meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3B, as in boy, is to proclaim March 10 through the 16th, 2019, as Girl Scouts Week. Well, you know... Is there a Girl Scout who wishes to come to the podium and answer any questions? Okay. Anyone at all?
Oh, come on, you guys.
Please, join us. Come on up. Share your name and the school you attend and...
Emily, and then I attend Heartland.
Emily, what grade are you in?
Uh, fifth.
And why is Girl Scout so important to you?
Um, it's a way to meet new people and do good for town and society.
Absolutely. And what do you like best about Girl scouting?
Definitely the cookie sales.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And how did sales go this year?
Uh, they went good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
How many thousands of boxes did you sell?
I have no idea.
Did you know that Girl Scout Thin Mints are vegan?
I did.
Isn't that the greatest thing in the world?
It is.
I know.
It really is, yeah. They say right in the box.
It does say right in the box.
Yeah.
That's why I ate five when I bought them from, uh...
Yeah.
Ms. Burghart's daughter. Yeah. So, scouting is important to you?
Yeah.
And it builds leadership, it builds character, it builds all sorts of great stuff.
Yeah.
What is your message to everyone tuning in tonight about the importance of Girl scouting and the importance of supporting your community?
I guess that if you do good, it'll be good for everyone.
I like that. That's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other Girl Scouts wish to say a few words? Yes. Come on up to the podium. And what is your name?
Jenna.
Jenna, what school do you attend?
Heartland.
Heartland, what grade are you in?
Third.
Third. And what inspirational words do you have for the community tonight?
Uh, thanks for letting me come.
Well, heck, thank you very much for coming. It was awesome.
Yeah.
So, any homework tonight?
Um, yeah, but I did it.
Oh, you did? Because if you'd like, I can call the principal now and... So, you're in the third grade?
Yeah.
So, are you nine or...
I'm nine.
You're nine, okay. And you love Girl scouting?
Yeah.
What's your favorite part?
Um, like, the crafts we do.
That's awesome. And you're going to be in Girl scouting as long as you can, right?
Yeah.
Cool. And the cookie sales went well?
Yeah.
And what's next on the agenda? What are you going to do next for Girl scouting?
Uh, I think we're going to sell cookies at a booth.
Oh, so you're still selling?
Yeah.
Holy moly. And five bucks a box, right?
Yeah.
Any deals you want to give the Council on those boxes?
I don't know.
You don't know?
We do have some.
Oh, my goodness. Well, members of the Council, we do have a proclamation to declare this week as Girl Scout Week. Do we have a motion to so proclaim?
So moved.
Alderman Burghart, Alderman Bruno makes the second. Now, ladies, watch this. All in favor of declaring and proclaiming this week as Girl Scout Week in the City of Geneva, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Huge. Thank you so much. Can I use the City Critic card for this?
Thank you. You're wonderful.
This is all being televised, by the way. Sure? I'm just teasing. Thank you.
And, yes, those are my...
Oh, thank you very much.
Yummy, yummy.
It's fine.
Oh, thank you.
I'll share some of these.
I'll take the...
Okay, ladies, here's the proclamation. Who would like to accept this on behalf of the City Council? Emily? Whoever? Heck, come on up. Isn't this cool? Now, you know, we like to recycle in Geneva, so if we could just return this next year, what is useful? Ladies, I know you have busy evenings, so if you need to sneak out, I totally understand. Thank you all very, very much.
You guys stay to my word. Thank you.
Oh, that's so sweet. You're so nice. We'll give these to the people who need them. Thank you.
members. Just a point of order, immediately following a motion and a second, to move an agenda item to the floor, I will invite City Administrator Dawkins to provide a synopsis of the topic prior to opening the floor for questions from the dais, staff, or the public. So, we'll begin with item 3C, recommend draft resolution authorizing the publication of the update 2019 City of Geneva zoning map as required by Illinois State Statute. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Kilburg, seconded by Alderman Marks. City Administrator Dawkins.
Good evening. Annually, the city is required to publish an update to the official zoning map under state law. This item satisfies that requirement. The updated zoning map incorporates landmarks, zoning map amendments, and planned unit developments that have been formally approved by the City Council in the past year. I would note, though, however, that the updated map does not include any changes that are proposed as part of the downtown zoning update project. Director DeGroot is with us this evening to answer any additional questions you might have.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments for Director DeGroot? All in favor of approving item 3C, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Item 3D is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Frank Marshall Electric in an amount not to exceed $308,319 for electric improvements to Dodson Pump Station, West Side Lift Station, and Couts Road Lift Station. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Marks?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Burghart. City Administrator Dawkins.
Sure. This contract is to improve the electrical systems at the locations indicated, to improve arc flash exposure, improve reliability, and to accommodate an emergency standby generator. The projects are contemplated over two fiscal years as budgeted, this current year and the next year. Three contractors submitted bids, and the low bidder is being recommended. We have Superintendent Van Gescam here this evening to answer any additional questions you might have.
Questions or comments from the Committee for the Superintendent? Seeing none, hearing none? All in favor of the motion, which is item 3D, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3E is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the execution of the Illinois Department of Transportation Right-of-Way Maintenance Agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno?
Seconded.
Seconded by Marks. Mrs. Dawkins.
Sure. This is essentially housekeeping. This is a two-year agreement that allows the city to do work in the state right-of-way without the need to provide a surety bond and provides that the city will perform all work in accordance with the conditions of the permit. I believe we have Superintendent Landers here this evening to answer any additional questions you might have.
Any questions on the dais for Superintendent Landers? Seeing none, hearing none? All in favor of the motion, which is item 3E, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3E passes unanimously. Item 3F is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Builders Paving LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,018,942 for the 2019 Street Improvement Program.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno?
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Marks. And just to clarify, that 42 cents is for Randall Road. Questions are... Oh, excuse me, Mrs. Dawkins.
Uh, three bids were received for the 2019 Street Improvement Program. Building Paving LLC was the lowest responsible bidder and are pre-qualified by IDOT and have previously performed satisfactory paving work for the City of Geneva. As such, the recommendation is to approve a resolution to execute a contract with Builders Paving LLC for the program. Rich Babica is here this evening to answer any additional questions you might have.
Questions on the dais for Director Babica. Alderman Burghart?
Can we get an update on the Street Improvement Program? And is there a public meeting scheduled?
I'll defer to Director Babica.
Already, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Babica.
Thank you, sir. Once the City Council approves the contract, then we'll initiate an open house. We'll notify all the residents on the candidate streets, and we will schedule an open house. We usually typically schedule two open houses, in case they can't make the first one.
And how are the streets selected each year?
The city engineer, Brian Schreiber, and the engineer technician, Alden Roscoe, review all the streets. They review them for rideability, for potholes, for previous maintenance issues, failures, whatnot, and then they categorize them and they work within the budget limits as established by the city administrator.
And Gray Street's one we've talked about for a couple of years. I know it's a challenging street because it's also... St. Charles is responsible for half of it. And that's not on the program this year, right?
Correct. And that's because St. Charles and the City of Geneva will be pursuing a joint project for the reconstruction of Gray Street. St. Charles has taken the lead on that. We are currently in the process of negotiating an intergovernmental agreement that will be brought forth under a separate contract to the City Council's review in the future.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rich. So, is... Would we expect Gray Street to be in this season's repaving cycle, do you think?
Correct. But again, it'll be separate from the current contract that's in front of the City Council tonight.
Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you. Perhaps for the Council, some of the Council members and people tuning in to Alderman Burghart's question, when you guys decide what streets to repair or make repairs or replacements, there is a pretty in-depth analysis as to... It goes into it. There's a lot of factors that I think are considered because there is a sweet spot. You know, you don't want them to go too long, you don't want to propel them too early. Can you enlighten us a little bit about that? Because you get questions all the time about why isn't my street getting done? Why is that one, you know?
Well, the resurfacing program is actually a preventative maintenance program. It's similar in strategy to the crack ceiling program that the city pursues also. There is a life expectancy curve, and without boring everybody with the details and getting too much of my public works geek on, what we basically try to do is find that sweet spot where reinvestment of a few dollars will bring that street back up to an optimal driving surface. So, if you think about it as a declining curve, like the second half of a bell curve from the peak down, we're trying to find streets that are right in that midpoint, that by injecting a certain amount of dollars back into that roadway. Because as a resurfacing, we're just taking the top surface off, doing some patches, and then putting a fresh surface back down. So, it's not like a reconstruction, which was on Richard Street, which went all the way down to the subbase or on South River.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I forgot my other question, Mr. Babica. The... When streets are reconstructed, is there a standard best practice, you know, gravel so many inches and top coat so many inches? The... And I ask, because I've noticed in certain spots, in fact, just today, outside of Old Chocolate Kitchen, there was pretty substantial heave right outside their door, and I've noticed that in some other places. I didn't know if we had latitude to specify a more stringent building standard. And more expensive, obviously.
Well, the city has adopted the IDOT standards for specifications for road and bridge work, the latest addition, and that does govern the structural design and the characteristics for the urban roadways and the roadways. Typically, what you're seeing, especially at this time of year with the vertical displacement, is the moisture that gets underground and then freezes and then starts to thaw as we start getting these warmer temperatures. And that's what can cause the pavement and the sidewalks, for that matter, to start getting that vertical displacement. You can, of course, build a road to any standard you want, as long as you're willing to bear the burden of that construction. But for a reconstruction, typically, roads that are up for reconstruction are as a result of significant public utility improvements, such as when we rebuilt the water... A project that would include the reconstruction of the water mains, a sanitary system, and the storm system. At that point in time, there's been so much disruption to the subbase that it's just practical at that point in time to take it all the way down to the gravel and build it back up.
So, whereas paving is comparatively common, reconstruction is rare?
Reconstruction is intense, as the residents on Richards and South River can attest.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? We have a motion by Bruno, a second by Marks, to approve item 3F. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. Item 3F passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 3G is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Kramer Tree Specialists Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1,987,328 for a five-year contract for city brush and leaf collection services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by McGowan and seconded by Bruno. Ms. Dawkins?
As the Mayor indicated, the recommendation is to approve a contract with Kramer Tree Specialists for the city brush and leaf collection programs. There was a memo in the packet that Kramer Tree, although not the lowest bidder, they were the most responsible bidder based on the city's past experience. Kramer's holding the leaf collection price as the same as it is currently for the next five years and actually lowered the cost of brush collection. So, this is for a five-year contract. I would note that we tried to go out for a joint bid with our neighboring communities. We couldn't get all that figured out, but we did all issue the bid on the same dates and opened them on the same date, so essentially, it was like a joint bid. It's just they bid individually for each city. So, I have Superintendent Landers and Director Babica here if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Questions for either the Superintendent or the Director? Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah, I had a question. Last fall, we had delays, and there was some seasonality to it and the fact that supposedly all the leaves fell on the same day. I guess my question is, we had a second bid, and, you know, I think that you raised several good points, that this company appeared not to be qualified. Is that what you would say?
Yes, I do have some concerns based on some of the references and things that were...
I guess, I always have a concern when you give a long, extended contract, because I think if we looked at our garbage contract, was there a period of time involved there where we were overpaying when we had a bidder that came in after three years and was substantially under? And I'm just using that as an example. I'm saying, this may look good on the surface today, but when we give a five-year contract, it really eliminates competition for five years. And, you know, I don't know if that's always in the best interest of the city to give such an extended contract. The other point that I'd like for you to address would be, this other company, Trees Are Us, it appears that they're somewhat of a startup, and it looks like they're venturing out into municipal work, and they don't have a lot of track record, they don't have a history. But I'm saying, wouldn't there be some potential benefit, especially since their quotation was somewhat under Kramer, to give them, let's say, for instance, a portion of the city as relates to leaf collection? Last year, we didn't get all the leaves collected, and we had to deal with snow. I'm saying, if we had two companies working and competing, wouldn't that be in the city's best interest? If we gave them the east side of the river and let Kramer do the west side of the river, that way, we could gain some experience and build competition that is... Competition is always in the best interest of the city. And when we give a five-year bid to one company, just because we've had a 10-year track record with them, I don't know if that's always the right thing to do. And I'd be interested in your argument that it is the right thing to do to give Kramer this five-year contract.
Okay. Well, to be perfectly honest with you, I guess I never thought of it from that perspective of breaking it up to... Breaking leaf collection up to two different contractors. What was written in the spec was that it was just going to be one contractor for the five-year term. It did a five-year term because that's what we've done in the past. I haven't, like I said, I haven't... I did not give that a thought about breaking it up. We really don't... We can't do that. We would have to go out to rebid to break up...
I'm saying, you had questions about, did they have sufficient equipment to do this? I'm saying, if you have two companies working at the city's leaf collection, I think that's in the city's best interest. Because I think time is a big consideration when we get into that season. And, you know, the argument has been that we've got more trees and more leaves to deal with than we ever have, and it seemed like Kramer struggled with that last year. Why don't we get two companies involved and give a company that's a startup in this an opportunity to compete and to show that they can perform and be a legitimate bidder in the future? If no one ever gives them an opportunity to bid and perform, how are they ever going to get into the business? And how are we going to build competition that's going to be in our best interest?
Not that I'm pushing them out of the way, but it's... We're getting a little bit of the deep end here, so... The lengthy contract, a five-year contract, is because the expectation of the city and the residents is that the contractor is going to have the experience and the wherewithal to complete the contract in a timely manner. Kramer had a rough year last year. We all did. I'm not going to sugarcoat that. The residents dealt with all that pain, and we still actually have another leaf collection schedule that's coming up here shortly to finish out their last year's contract. But that length of the contract gives the vendor, the contractor, the financial stability that if they do have to go out and secure equipment or make the investment in staff or training or the facilities to dispose of the material, that they have a financial wherewithal that's going to help them lock it in. In reviewing the references, and this is something that we spent a significant amount of time discussing, my Superintendent and I, I don't want to be the test bed. And when I say aye, I mean, the Director of Public Works on behalf of the citizens of Geneva, don't want to be the test bed for someone that's learning the ins and outs of municipal leaf collection program. There are plenty of opportunities for that contractor to get into municipal leaf collection. They can go collect leaves for the Park District. They can try smaller communities. We have a fairly large footprint for a leaf collection, and we have a very narrow timeframe to get that done. And when you look at a well-established contractor such as Kramer Tree Care that struggled last year and failed to complete their collection requirements, gives a little bit of a preview of how intense and how variable this collection program can be. We did look at, and we spent a significant amount of time, and when I say we, I mean mostly Nate, spent a significant amount of time dealing with his counterparts in St. Charles and Matavia, trying to come up with a joint specification that would match everything. Problem is, is that Matavia collects leaves in-house, and so they just wanted to contract out the brush collection. St. Charles contracts out both brush and leaf, but their standards are... Their schedule's a little bit different than ours, so we just couldn't make those two mesh. So, we went with the next best thing, which is to bid everything out together and still hope that that attracted candidates.
Who's doing St. Charles? Kramer?
Well, actually, I don't know if they've made a formally decision. Recommendation?
Kramer has done it in the past.
Well, that's what I'm... That's the point I'm trying to get at, is that these companies, they get all the contracts, and they spread themselves so thin. And last year, I think it was a case of limited equipment.
No. No. That was not the case last year.
Well, more crews then, and more equipment would obviously probably help address the problem, I would think.
The issue we had last year...
You throw more resources at it, it should create greater disappearance of leaves, I would think.
Well, again, the issue we had last year were two factors. We had the sudden and relatively fast leaf drop of the majority of the trees within the city, and then we had early snowfall. We had a first six-inch snowfall right after Thanksgiving, and before that, we had other instances of freezing temperatures that froze the leaves, which kept anybody from picking them up. So...
But...
It was not the...
But we had a big snowfall on a Monday or Tuesday, and the thing is, is that Kramer's, you'd indicated, refused to collect leaves on a Saturday. I mean, you know...
And I think that's a decision that Kramer regrets to this day. That was... That was their decision.
Yeah.
And we questioned that decision at the time, but we cannot force them to work on a Saturday. That was their decision, and they paid the price. And they're paying the price by having to come back out in... Was it the 18th? The week of the 18th?
Yes.
The week of the 18th to do their final collection effort.
But we're paying additional, though, for this additional collection, correct?
No, we're not. No. The 25th. That is the final collection that's due to the City of Geneva from last year's program. There is no additional cost. There is no additional fees to the residents. That is, they're meeting their contractual obligations for the current contract, which actually expires at the end of April. So... So.
Have we ever, I mean, obviously, we haven't thought about possibly splitting it out. Do you potentially see some benefit to that?
Well, if you want to split the contract between brush and leaf, there are a lot more companies that just do brush collection than leaf collection. And what we were concerned about is the last brush collection of the calendar year coincides with the first leaf collection. Now, if you have two different contractors coming inside there, you very much have a very real likelihood of the scenario of the leaves not getting collected because there's brush on top of the leaves. And that contractor that's collecting the leaves is going to say, there's brush on top of it, I'm not coming back. I made an effort going on the street, I'm done. Same thing with brush. If there's brush and leaves co-mingled, the brush collection contractor is going to point fingers at each other. And the residents are going to be the ones that are going to get caught in the middle. Now, you've made a comparison to the refuse contract. The refuse contract became very lucrative for the city in bidding that out because we have a lot more competition in the marketplace. Lake Shore Recycling has made a significant impact and inroads into the refuse contractor. They are now the largest refuse contractor in Northern Illinois. I'm not making a commercial for them, they've, that's simply, they've made a market decision to make that impact. I hope in the future that we would get more competition to be honest with you. I was surprised and pleasantly pleased that we had two bidders on this project. However, my professional recommendation that I, as the leaf collection program is already challenging enough for both the residents and staff, that I don't want to be the testbed and I hope that the residents don't want to be the testbed to bring in a new contractor for them to learn the ins and outs of leaf collection. And for a $30,000 price difference over five years on a 2.7 million contract?
Two million.
Two million contract, it's.
Two percent.
Yeah.
But I guess the point that I'm making is though, if you give a one-year or two-year contract, then all of a sudden you've got two companies competing for it, guess what? The numbers go down. And our waste management contract proves that. Long-term contracts, I think, are to the detriment of the city. It's just my opinion.
Well, the waste contract is a five-year contract also.
I know. I'm just saying, that, I think, could potentially be to the detriment of the city because we came up with a lot lower numbers, obviously, as far as waste management or as far as our waste contract. But the thing is, is were we overpaying for three or four years as a result of it? You know, if we had a two-year contract.
Let's stick to the brush and.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's an example and as it relates to long-term, am I out of order there?
No, not at all. I just wanted to focus back on the leaf and brush as opposed to talking about.
I'm just, okay, and I think I made my point. I'm just saying, you have somebody that wants to get into the business and if nobody gives them an opportunity, how do they get into the business? And I think Geneva's large enough and we had enough issues as it relates to leaf collection the last year or two out of the last four years or five years, that maybe splitting the contract and letting two companies try to collect those leaves in a shorter window makes sense to me and I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you. I agree with Alderman Kilburg in part and disagree with him in part. As far as the long-term contract, that doesn't work well with baseball players ever, you know, but I think as vendors, I think overall, we do well to lock in, I think, sometimes because I think the cost of goods and services tend to go up, you know, quicker than we stay pace. So I'm not so much concerned with the length of the contract and I think we have benefited from that from locking it and having it known. The thing that I do agree with Alderman Kilburg about is the, kind of the lack of performance that we had from the vendor that we're choosing right now. There's so much that goes into this, I don't want to run this program, I don't want to be responsible for it because I know there's a million variables, but admittedly, I think that Kramer could have performed better, let's say, in the fall. And admittedly, they should have been out on a Saturday and they regret some of the things they did. So it's a, it's a little difficult to go ahead and approve this contract with that taste in your mouth still with leaves still on the ground that didn't get picked up. So it is tough to then reward them with a five-year contract, so this is a tough vote for me in that regard. But as far as the length of the contract, I'm okay with that, so thank you.
Alderman Mulhaddra.
So two things. I think we're making too big a deal out of the second bidder. Dean, if I'm the new kid on the block trying to get business, I'm responding to every question the city asks as fast as I can. And the fact that these guys haven't got back to us to answer questions that are related to the bid makes me question how rapidly they're going to respond if we call them for a weekend pickup or anything else. It is good to see that there is a second bidder because for the bulk of this decade, there's only been one player in the game. I am curious though, I agree with Jim and Dean, Kramer slipped last year. I believe they can recover and they'll perform well, but what recourse do we have over the course of the five years if they do not?
The contract does call for a performance bond. So in the event that Kramer becomes insolvent or fails to perform, the city has the right with notice to terminate the contract. And then the city would be obligated to go back out to an open bid to solicit a new contractor and the performance bond would be called. And hopefully, that performance bond would cover the difference between the new contract and the old contract.
Do we get to call no performance? I mean, insolvency, I think, is sort of obvious, but who determines not performance?
The city council.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? We have a motion by McGowan, a second by Bruno, yes, sir. Yes, you can. Please come on up, sir. Forgive me.
Thank you. My name is Bill Thompson. I'm logistics manager for Trees Are Us. I've listened to what you guys have been saying and no discredit to Kramer Tree, I've known them for a number of years, they're a great company. I've heard say that we're not experienced in these things. We've been doing brush collection for many municipalities for many years. We're also involved with FEMA, we do a lot of FEMA disaster relief. So when it comes to figuring out a way to get the job done, we know how to do that. Leaf collection is just like brush collection, it's just a different type of equipment. You just have to know what your time is to collect so many yards of debris. And I think that, given the opportunity, our company can meet the task. I think that, going back to what the alderman said, giving somebody else an opportunity to get in there and show that they can do it is all that they need. We've been in business about 20 years, so we're not a new kid on the block. We've been around, we've paid our dues. We've done numerous work for Cook County Forest Reserve, Lake County Forest Reserve, we've done brush collection for Wayne Township, we've done brush collection for the city of Naperville, we've done brush collection for a number of other streamwood, Hoffman Estates. These are larger communities. So I think that we're pretty confident in the fact that we could meet the needs of your community as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sorry, you mentioned brush pickup.
We have to, I need to caution the council that we are not in a position to negotiate a contract this evening. That contract has been negotiated by professional staff and recommended to this body, so I would caution you with respect to being very cognizant of any statements made from the dais.
Do, have you ever done leaf collection?
We have not done leaf collection. This would be a new endeavor for us. We've done the research and that, we know what type of equipment that it takes. We're willing to put forth the expense of buying all new equipment to take this endeavor on. We have the means to do it. We have the personnel to do it. We work year-round on a number of different projects. And as I said, we are involved with FEMA, we do a lot of disaster relief type work, which is down in Texas and Florida and Georgia. Over the last three years, we've been working with them as well.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Clements?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions I'd like to ask as well.
Same caution applies.
Yes, sir, thank you. You had mentioned that you do FEMA work. One of the concerns of staff is that you would not have a lot of your team members available necessarily if there was a hurricane or multiple hurricanes that had hit somewhere. How would you respond to that concern?
To that concern, one of the things that we've adopted now with our FEMA program is that we use a lot of subcontractors.
Forgive me for interrupting, Mr. Thomas, I'm going to defer to our city attorney to make a statement regarding that question.
And with all due respect, Alderman, negotiating in public is probably not the best thing to do and responding to something that's already been put in writing, that's staff's job to vet contract proposals. And I understand you're following up, but if we got into the business of vetting and/or reviewing contracts each and every time before the council, we would be setting kind of a dangerous precedent of continuing negotiations. So I would just caution that this process may have an unintended consequence.
So I cannot ask any questions I have regarding what I have before me here from city staff.
I would advise not to, no. In fact, in that endeavor, it's typically better practice to give questions before either the matter comes before the committee of the whole or see the city administrator and/or staff in order to have those issues addressed before moving them to city council for full action.
I understand that. The city staff is telling me they're concerned about there not being crew availability if there's a hurricane. That's their concern. They cannot answer the question that I just asked him. So it's, there's no way for me to ask the city staff for an answer to that question that I just put up, but I will, I'll leave it at that.
What would be the difference if Alderman Clements put that question to the city before as we have been? And you responded and put it on the website and copied all the people on the dais? What, can you explain the differential? What's the difference between that and doing it now?
Because that communication could take place and, you know, all questions regarding the proposed offer and contract could be made and put into the package, package before you could, before staff would A, make a recommendation and B, you vote on it. Otherwise, it's going to continuing, I mean, I'm sure every person here could.
Well, the recommendation, when we ask questions, the recommendations, when the packet comes out and we read it and we ask questions, the recommendation's already been made, so.
It is.
That statement's false, what you just said.
Well, it's not, no, it's not false, but you can certainly ask anything you want. You can ask that a matter be deferred and of course, you could vote no and ask for further information and continue a matter because something hasn't been to your satisfaction addressed. Certainly, you don't have to vote on something that isn't to your professional degree of discretion ready for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Kilburg?
Is there a representative from Kramer present this evening?
Yes.
Hi, welcome. You've been referenced a lot this evening and.
I have.
We're going to give you an opportunity to address the questions related to last fall.
Yes.
That might have an impact on my vote.
Sure, understood. So last fall was aggressive. I don't know how it impacted your community, but it was very impactful on our industry regarding, and the markets were in brush contracts, leaf pickups, and then of course, tree care. It was a big storm. It was a huge storm in every market. We have extra leaf machines, so for every three machines, we'd like to have one backup per groups of three. This storm we had last November was very, very wet, heavy snow. Our man-hours to keep that machinery going to work in the conditions it's not designed for exceeded $80,000 to keep truck. The trucks were freezing as we'd fill them up and we couldn't even dump them, so we had them run through our shop, four bays, heat them up. Every truck was on deck. It was a learning experience for us, there's no doubt about it. The reason we chose not to work that Saturday, which we regret, we wish we would have subbed out more work to a company we work with, with our mechanics, because we do most of our work in-house, was we needed to recoup so that we could fire up again full throttle on Monday. So it was, it was very aggressive. We learned a lot. We have a lot of things in place now to avoid that. But it was, it was a, it was a big storm. It really was. It might not have seemed heavy snow to you, but it stuck to everything. Wires, tree, the tree damage for us was in the millions. So it was an overwhelming storm, but we certainly learned a lot from that. So looking to move forward and improve, of course. Does anybody else have any questions?
Alderman Burkhart?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Kramer, sorry. So Mike, I'm not a risk taker, so a five-year contract to me sounds like a good thing, stability, but I think if some of the aldermen, other aldermen have mentioned, what if we have another bad year with you in year two or year three?
You won't have another bad year with us. We will do everything in our power to show everyone we are doing everything possible. There are many that were converting more trucks this season committed to a storm that we think will never happen like this again. But we will be prepared. It's going to take more trucks and more machines to back up. When you're abusing those machines and using them not the way they're intended, it requires far more work to keep them working in a condition they shouldn't be working. Eventually, though, it does become too unsafe to do it. So then you have to just make the call, it's weather, and we work with it. We stay safe no matter what. So that wasn't why we made that call on Saturday.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Well, thank you for the questions.
Alderman Ruby?
Are we, as a council, are we allowed to email our questions to staff that we would like asked of the Trees Are Us representative?
Well, I'm going to defer to the city attorney with respect to processes, but my sense is that, that we are on the precipice of re-letting these bids based on the questions we're having this evening. And my concern is that depending on the direction the committee takes, shy of postponing the matter until a later date, we are availing ourselves of risk no matter what decision we take.
Sure.
That's my opinion. I will defer to the city attorney on that.
There's a motion that's been made and the matter is with respect to the Kramer contract.
Sure.
The actions that can be had right now are you vote on it and move it to council consideration, you vote it down, or you move to defer in some way, shape, or form. Those are the proper actions before this committee of the whole. Asking staff to do things outside of that would come under new business or on another matter.
Okay. Well, my position is to vote against this because Kramer got to voice his story and Trees Are Us did not. And I would like to know some more information from Trees Are Us in response to the information that staff provided.
Certainly not arguing with you, Alderman. The question that was originally put to the gentleman was with respect to performance last year and the difficulty that associated with Kramer's services. That's certainly a relevant question with respect to whether they wish to be, whether this council wishes to retain them. What's not supposed to happen is an open debate between two proposals. There's one motion on the floor right now and that's what needs to be deliberated. If the council does not wish to deliberate that now or at all, that's fine, but that's a motion that needs to be made to table or to defeat it. But asking to kind of go back and forth in open session, I think, is problematic for a number of reasons.
We have a motion on the floor, ladies and gentlemen. The original motion was made by Alderman McGowan, it was seconded by Alderman Bruno to approve the contract to Kramer, excuse me, Kramer Tree Service in the amount, right, to the amount defined under item 3G. Madam Recording Secretary, please take a roll call on this matter.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Michael Clements?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Mulhaddra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Nay.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
We have a tie vote, folks, five to five. In a tie vote, the chair has the pleasure of voting and I vote aye to pass this matter along to the city council. We are at item 3H, ladies and gentlemen. Recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Studio GC in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for city facilities assessment services. Motion by Alderman Burkhardt?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clements. Ms. Dawkins?
The current budget provided for a citywide facilities assessment to include city hall, the Public Works Building, the Police Finance Building, the water and wastewater treatment plants, both fire stations, and the Tricom Dispatch Building. The assessment will include a review of interior and exterior building components, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, ADA access, safety and security. HVAC, plumbing, electrical, ADA access, safety and security measures, specialized equipment, and elevator systems. We received 14 submittals, and they were evaluated based upon ability, experience, product offering, and overall strength of the team. The recommendation is to execute a contract with Studio GC. Costs for the assessment will be split between the general, electric, wastewater, wastewater funds, and Tricom. Again, we have Superintendent Landers here, as well as backup Director Babica, to answer any additional questions you may have.
Questions or comments for either the director or the superintendent, Alderman Swanson?
My initial question is, why do we need to have an outside consultant conduct this, what seems to be a compilation of information that I think we ought to already have most of in-house? And I guess my question would be, we added to our administrative staff last year, and could we assign that to someone internally, save on the consulting expense, and most of the information we're providing the consultant, we already have? So I guess my question is, why do we need an outside consultant to do this work for us, for information that we probably should already have?
And I will let public works staff address this, and then if I have more to add, I will, will add to that.
That is a great question. I will start off by saying that I don't have the certifications on some of the items that are being looked at, elevators, things like that. My title is Superintendent of Street Fleet and Facilities. I don't have the certification. I do not feel comfortable doing those kind of things, and determining whether or not we need to upgrade an elevator, put a new one in, roofing, electrical, those aren't my, those aren't my area of expertise. You want me to fill a pottle? I can fill a pottle.
Understand. But those are things we have inspected annually. Those are things that we have replaced on a regular basis. So I guess the way I look at it is, we should already know what we have in place, when it was installed, when it was repaired, and when we think it's going to need to be replaced. And whether or not we do this $60,000 consulting study may or may not have any impact on what fails during the next season. It may be that the two-year-old HVAC unit fails, as opposed to the 18-year-old, and this study isn't going to help us with respect to that. So I think it's compiling information we already have. I think, to me, we should just take a look at it and do it in-house. I think we're throwing money away hiring a consultant to compile this information for us.
Well, I'll always defer to you. So here's how we got to where we're at today. The public works building has a number of what we refer to as water features in the roof, where we have drips and sometimes downright waterfalls within the facility that house several million dollars' worth of equipment. And so we brought in a contractor to take, to do evaluation of the roof. And the evaluation of the roof, of a 40-year-old roof, was the roof needs to be replaced. And then they gave us a budgetary estimate, and my eyes about rolled into the back of my head. Then in my office, I actually don't have any heat or AC in my office, because the actuator that powers the ventilator that brings that into my office is $6,000 to replace, and is no longer built or maintained by the HVAC contractor. So we looked into that, too. And they did an assessment of the HVAC within the public works facility, and my eyes rolled into the back of my head again. So I had a meeting with the city administrator, and we kind of discussed the reality of a significant amount of money that it would take to repair and replace both these integral components to my building. And we decided that if we're going to approach this, we're going to approach this in a systematic and professional manner. And the best way to do that is to do an evaluation of not only just the public works building, but the police department, the two firehouses, and city hall. And later on, Tricom asked if they could join in on the study, and they're paying for their own share. So what this is, is a neutral third-party assessment of what are the bones of the buildings. Is, they're looking at literally everything from the electrical system and how the panels are distributed. And I can tell you by experience that when we have to take circuits out for service within a public works building, a lot of times, it takes a significant amount of staff to figure out which panel services those. A lot of these buildings have been rehabbed and remodeled so many times over their lifespan that they are nowhere near where the original blueprints are. And some of those remodels and revisions within those facilities were relatively minor, but, so they didn't require blueprints. I had a gentleman actually in the back of the room point out the fact that one of our outlets back in the hallway is actually out of code. So to say that we have the internal expertise, no one, I have a professional engineer, who's the Assistant Director of Public Works, but because he's a PE, he is not a mechanical engineer. Mechanical engineering is a very specialized field. You have mechanical engineers for HVAC, you have mechanical engineers for fire suppression systems, you have mechanical engineers for plumbing systems. Licensed plumbers and plumbing inspections, we use a contractor to conduct all the city's licensed plumbing inspections, which are paid for by the permit by that property owner to pay for that time. We do not have a licensed plumber on staff. We have a building commissioner who contracts out electrical reviews, and has an electrical inspector conduct those inspections. Again, we don't have all the facilities. Not that I'm knocking the Assistant City Administrator, but as a public works director with 27 years of experience, I can tell you I don't have the professional criteria or experience to conduct a citywide facility assessment, and then stand in front of the city council and say, I need a significant amount of money to make these buildings ready to serve us the public for the next 20 to 40 years.
And if we were to approve this study now, when do you think we would need to repeat it? How often would you recommend doing this sort of endeavor?
The purpose of this study is to develop a five-to-a-10-year capital improvement plan, which will then be presented to the city council at an next strategic planning session, during the various, bless your, public workshops, with a criteria ranked of what needs to be fixed first. And so the city council can make informed decisions as to what's in the best use of the city's funds.
And if I may just add to that, part of the fiscal year 20 budget contemplated a bunch of small building projects. What we presented was not small building projects, but took that as a group, as a pot of money that we put aside, so that we could complete this study and use those priorities, rather than if we fix an air conditioning here this year, and all of a sudden find out, well, we shouldn't have replaced it with that type of air conditioner, we should have done this, because we also needed to do X, Y, and Z. So again, it's trying to come out with a, a plan that we know what our needs are, we can fund those needs, and we're not just doing Band-Aids here and there, because that's what we have been doing. We have been just, kind of, as something breaks, we fix it without looking at the body as a whole.
And a big piece of what we did budget for was in the electric department, and I don't believe we're looking at any of the electric buildings.
We budgeted $400,000 in the...
I'm talking about for the study in the budget.
The study, $10,000 is from general fund.
And $30,000 was for the electric fund?
Right, because it's based upon the facilities and what's, what's being done.
Okay. So, but we're not looking at any of the electric enterprise fund buildings?
Well, electric is part of public works building. That's divided between electric, water, wastewater, and general fund. All three divisions are housed in that building.
Right.
So they all share a portion of that.
But we're not looking at any other of the electric divisions?
I don't know if we're looking...
Sub-stations, transformers?
No, no. That's a separate.
Those are a complete separate...
These are just the facilities that we actually work in, as opposed to facilities that house our equipment to, to provide the electric.
Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you. You know, just like your eyes rolled in the back of your head, you know, when you found out what the roof cost and the actuator for that, when we see $60,000 for this, our eyes roll a little bit, too. It's twice the amount of money that represents the difference in the two contracts that we were just discussing before, so it is a significant expenditure. Comment and a question. A comment is, homeowners associations use this type of thing regularly for budgetary purposes. You know, it does help them, you know, have a long-term plan as to what they, you know, when they need to incur things, and it's a, they are useful tools in that regard. My one question is, can you give me in one minute or less, a level of comfort that there's going to be a return on investment? And I think Stephanie was starting to go there. Is, you know, are we going to see $60,000 of savings as a result of having this plan in place over the next several years? Are you confident that that's, it's going to pay for itself, rather than us just fixing things as they come up?
Well, I think for the first time, the city is going to have...
The first time we've ever done this, correct?
Correct. For the first time, the city's going to have a comprehensive assessment of all its facilities, as well as a neutral comprehensive assessment of what's good, what's bad, and what, like, not to punk a movie, but what's the ugly in the buildings, and allow the city council to have an informed decision as to how to move forward. Right now, we come in front of you and say, well, the air compressor blew up, we need to replace it, it's $25,000. That's not budgeted. Needs to be done. But I can't tell you what's the lifespan of the compressor down at the other end of the building, because we don't have the technical wherewithal to diagnose that compressor. That's what this study's going to do. It's going to provide staff with the information that can be provided to the city council to make an informed decision as to how to best forward move with the long-term maintenance and care for its public assets.
So there will be a arrow eye at it?
That is the plan. And I'm not, I wasn't being facetious.
Alderman Ruby, Alderman Maladra, and then Alderman Swanson, unless someone else wishes to speak for the first time?
So it looks like the consultant is bringing in subcontractors to, to analyze, let's say, it says components require professional certification for an accurate assessment. And the consultant, who is not a contractor in the trades, will provide a one-stop service. So is that... Are there multiple professionals being brought in by this company?
Yes, if you look at the packet, they do have a couple of outside...
We also, I believe, have a representative from the firm that's...
Yes, and we do. We do have a representative from, Craig Meadows is here from Studio GC to also answer questions if needed. But there are a couple of outside people that work for them, specifically the mechanical engineers, that will look at the HVAC systems, the roofing systems.
Okay, so do you feel the value in having one person?
Oversee him?
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
Is better than hiring...
Than having each individual serve them.
Right. And then, so what about, like, elevator systems, for example? That came up, you know, elevators are inspected annually?
Yearly, yes.
Okay, so, so what added value is coming from this study that we don't get from our annual inspection?
Well, the annual inspection is basically, does your elevator hold up to, you know, you've got a weight limit on it. So they put 2,500 pounds of lead in the elevator, and they see if it goes up and down.
Okay.
And that's, not to take anything away from what they do, but that's basic, that's their basic test.
Sure.
It's a conveyance test, simply, simply for...
So in contrast, what more information will we have on our elevator? Just for, just to use this as an example?
Well, the, the one thing that I would point out is, specifically here, we have a chairlift. What we're looking at for that is, is that really something that is viable here in order to provide ADA access? Or do we need to go to something different? Do we actually need to put a full-fledged elevator lift in here, rather than a chairlift? So that's, that's kind of the genesis of that.
Okay.
And if I may, I think, back to your elevator example, this would also look at lifespan. So they may test it, and it passed all safety standards, and it's good today, but is it going to be a five-year elevator, a seven-year elevator? When do we think we would need to replace that, so we can start planning for those types of replacements?
Okay, well, and shouldn't we know that information based on when the elevator was installed?
Feasibly, you could say, it's just like your home roof. Your roof is good for 20 years.
Sure.
But there are times where you haven't inspected, and all of a sudden, you find out 18 years in, you have to get a new roof. So although you have what the warranty is, and you have what the anticipated lifespan is, until you actually get in there and look at the mechanicals and look at how it's been used, maybe, maybe we're talking about, and I know this isn't on the list, but the parking garage elevator. It's, it's, it's open to the elements, so its wear and tear may be different than an elevator that's at public works, which there isn't one, but...
Firehouse.
Firehouse, thank you. So just, so it's that kind of, it gives you not only what the, what the, what it's doing now, but what is its anticipated lifespan, based on the wear and tear that they can see that's happened, so that then again, we can plan for those replacements.
Sure, okay. So I understand the planning portion, I just, I'm not sure, you know, if, if this comes back that, you know, we've got $10 million of repairs that need to be done, what good is that information when we don't have the $10 million?
Well, that's, and I think that's so that you know what you have, and you start the planning process, and you figure out what your priorities are, and is this a building worth staying in? Or is it a building, okay, maybe we need to look somewhere else? And I'm not, I don't want anybody to get the idea that that's why we're doing it. We're doing it to understand what our assets are, and what we have, and, and what that dollar, we don't know what that dollar is. It could be 2 million, it could be 10 million, it could be 20 million. I, we don't know.
Okay, so is there any sort of process in place currently that we've been, how have we been getting by? We've never done this before. How, I know we've done a lot of Band-Aids, but I'm just curious, administratively, what, if there is anything specific in place to, to track these things? I mean, like, do we know the age of things?
We do inspections, we do safety inspections and those kinds of things, but again, we had relative, for a while, we had relatively new buildings.
Sure.
All of those buildings are now aging. And we're finding even that some of our newer buildings maybe weren't designed in the best way, or weren't. So I mean, again, from the basic annual elevator inspections, or the monthly safety committee, they go around and do inspections. It's kind of, as things go wrong, we address them.
Right, which is what you do as a homeowner. And granted, this is a much different...
But, no, I think it's the same. I mean, I think it's, it's like being a homeowner, but you just have six buildings.
Sure, sure.
And they're, they're much larger than your individual home.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
So to stick with the homeowner analogy, I think it's better to know all the things you need to address, so you can determine what you're going to address this year, and what you can address next year, and what you can put off. It helps you prioritize. Not so very long ago, we didn't have a plan for how we would manage our infrastructure capital equipment. When things broke, we addressed it, and then, then they started to break more frequently, and the unanticipated costs associated with non-anticipated breakdowns was starting to get to be problematic. And so the council created a plan to understand its capital equipment and, and a replacement cycle associated with that. So this seems to me to be the same type of thing. What we're looking to do is find a way of proactively managing millions of dollars' worth of public assets. Our, our buildings and facilities are expensive, and they're maintained at taxpayer expense. And as most of us know, when you deal with an emergency unanticipated repair, the cost is higher than when you take it, tackle it proactively, and things like that. So as a, as a product, or as a result, I think having this plan is easy, it's consistent with other things we've done, like I mentioned, the infrastructure and capital equipment plans. The question then becomes whether or not we need a consultant to do the work. In my line of work, we work with consultants a lot. We work with consultants all the time. And there's three factors that lead us to bring in a contractor. One factor would be what we call staff augmentation, where the project has a timeline that our staff can't meet, or whether there are other things we would rather our staff be doing in order, instead of working on that project. Another one is lack of subject matter expertise. You guys both stood there and said, you're not certified, you're not qualified, things like that. And then the third one, and we've done this a few times, is when you do need, when you see value in getting the perspective of an objective third party. And so you guys are basically standing here, if I understand correctly, kind of claiming all three of those things. We have staff, we have staff who could be doing some aspects of this, but at some point, they would have to turn to outside help anyway, because of the subject matter expertise gap. How long it would take to do this, given the age of our buildings, given the willy-nilly way that we approached repairs and maintenance up to this point? It's not as simple as, you know, looking at an Excel spreadsheet where we've been tracking this all along. It would involve digging through files, digging through emails, figuring all this stuff out. So it's a time-consuming project, and to have staff diverted from what they're normally doing for a short amount of time, okay, but to have staff diverted from what they do regularly for a lengthy amount of time, that's, that's the case when, where I work, we would bring in contractors. The cost, I agree with Jim. It's, it's an eye-opening cost, but I've got no benchmark to know if this is reasonable, unreasonable, so I'm basically looking at you guys and trusting that you've done your homework, and you think there's value in this $60,000. But in general, I understand why you're proposing the... But in general, I understand why you're proposing the contract, the consultant. The consultant may be working with contractors, but in that case, he's a general contractor, and he's managing the project under your supervision. You're gaining the staff augmentation, you're gaining the subject matter expertise, and we're gaining what's going to become the, the roof of a facilities maintenance plan that I think is going to help us be more proactive about things instead of reactive. The timing aspect, you know, to Bob's point, maybe we decide we got to replace Unit A, and Unit B blows up, you know, that, that can happen. But knowing that you have to address Unit A, and being able to do it proactively will help us manage our costs better, rather than having to respond to, you know, fire calls and things like that. So I get it, and I'll support it.
Before I recognize Alderman Swanson for a second time, anyone who wishes to speak for a first time? Alderman Kilburg?
This type of ongoing maintenance and anticipation of maintenance at Geneva District 304 is done internally, I believe. Have we discussed this with them, and how they've approached it over the years, and how they've done it successfully as far as building maintenance?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Bob?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Not to add a lot more, but I think to expand on the city administrator's point, the difference between your, your annual elevator inspection, that's a qualitative test. Throw in 2,500 pounds, it goes up and down, it passes. I don't know if they, but you can get much more in-depth. You put amperes, it's drawing some unusual amount of current. To raise that 2,500 pounds, you know, that motor's about to fail. So I think there's additional things you clearly do get from an in-depth inspection. Thanks.
Alderman Swanson?
I, I understand why you're proposing this. I guess the sticking point that I'm having is this information we ought to already have. We're, we're looking at eight different buildings. We should have a maintenance plan in place, and now we're proposing a $60,000 consulting agreement on top of that to tell us what we ought to be doing already. So that's, that's the problem that I have, and I think over time, we could establish that. We already have a capital improvement plan, we know what our assets are, we know their relative life. To use your example, Mr. Babica, you mentioned the air compressor, that one we replaced for 25,000. What about the 10-year-old one down the street? This plan will not change that. And that one down, the 10-year-old one down the street could go out next month. And, and this plan will not have an ROI. This plan will ostensibly give us a roadmap for a maintenance agreement, but it's, it's really a planning tool. There is no ROI from a planning tool. So it's just giving us more information so that we can better budget. But I think we already have it in our capital improvement plan. So I, so I do not agree with this consulting agreement. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion, we have a second. Madam Recording Secretary?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Nay.
Michael Clements?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Nay.
Hey, folks, the chair votes aye. And the chair votes aye based on one thing. Not one thing, forgive me, but I want to stress a word that all of us probably have thought about. It's been percolating, and that's called objectivity. Because I will bet you a dollar to donuts and/or even some of these Girl's Got Cookies that if staff came back with recommendations, it'd be subject to the subjectivity from this council. So I proudly vote aye. Thank you. Let's see if we can keep the trend going here.
Aye. Item aye.
Was that not clear? Item 3a, ladies and gentlemen, is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Satec Incorporated in the amount of $50,250 for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and $37,254 for fiscal year 2019, '20, computer replacement projects. Motion by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Marks. Questions or comments regarding this matter from the dais? But first, Ms. Dawkins, a summary.
This item, as mentioned, is to approve the procurement of computer replacements for both the current fiscal year and fiscal year '20. Keep in mind, though, obviously, the ones for fiscal year '20 wouldn't be delivered until after May 1st. Bids were solicited according to city code, and the recommended vendor is the low bidder. The bid specifications and tabulations were in the packet that was online. Pete Collins is available, should you have any additional questions, he will come out from behind the curtain.
Any questions for our producer extraordinaire, Mr. Collins? Alderman Bruno?
I would imagine the city administrator can answer this, but thank you, Mayor. But those computers that are displaced, where do we find a home for them?
I think it varies, so I'm actually going to defer. Some we just use for parts. We use a lot for parts.
Some we do strip, some we do strip for parts, but, but the other ones, we're looking into, Dell used to take them back. We used to be able to recycle them with Dell directly, but they don't do that anymore. So at this point, we end up going to somebody like Hobie and selling them.
I'm sorry, what was these?
Putting them back to somebody like Hobie in Batavia, who takes...
Collins, can I trouble you to speak directly into that microphone?
It's not picking up.
There we go.
Let's get down. There's a recycler in town that'll take these. And basically, we can resell them and reclaim them, because at the point where we're replacing them, they're four, they're at least four years old anyway.
Are they, are, so are they recycled for scrap, or recycled for resale?
For resale, if we wipe them. It just depends on what, how many we move. I mean, we're not moving huge amounts of them, so typically, like I said, in the past, we've recycled them directly, but now we have to find other places to make them go away.
Well, it would be my preference that we wipe them, and we, we find another home for them, to keep them out of landfills, or not, not for scrap. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Burkhart?
These are, some of these are pretty powerful machines. Do you think we over...
No, because, like I said, again, we, we went through this before. We go through, you know, we try to keep them on a four-year cycle so they last longer. Typically, in the past, they've actually had to go longer than that cycle, so we buy them with the anticipation that they'll still be able to do their job by the end of the cycle. So we buy, we, you know, they're, at this point, I think, these are all, I think they're all I7s, except for the, and even the laptops for the squads are too. So it gets our, our lifecycle out of them.
Okay, all right, thanks.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of the motion offered under item aye? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. We skip item J, ladies and gentlemen, because all of you received correspondence order today from the city administrator regarding the reason why item J is not on the agenda tonight. So we skip over to item K. Item K is, yes?
If we're amending the agenda tonight, I'd like to add something to it.
We're not amending. We're simply skipping over this item. Item K is to recommend draft resolution approving a redevelopment agreement, development incentive, and reimbursement agreement between the City of Geneva and State Street Coffee LLC for Duncan, located at 206 East State Street. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Rodecky, seconded by McGowan. Ms. Dawkins, please.
Sure. In June 2018, the city council approved a redevelopment agreement for 206 East State Street for a Duncan franchise. The original agreement was conditioned upon the property closing on a date certain, which was the original anticipated closing date. As previously stated to the city council, the closing was delayed due to circumstances outside the buyer's control. These matters have now been resolved, and a new closing date has been established. The agreement is the same agreement approved by the city council in June, with the exception that the date changes and the corporate name change. The parties have advised that closing will not occur without re-establishment of this agreement. We do have Kathleen Timoshenko, our economic development director, here to answer any additional questions.
Questions for the director of economic development from the dais? Alderman Kilburg?
In the, the summary that was provided to the council, it said the closing was delayed from, it was originally, it was originally projected to close October 1st, 2018. And in here, it says, "The closing was delayed due to the lender's requirement for additional environmental investigation." I'd ask staff to, to provide some, some feedback as it relates to, what was the lender looking for, since, since a city would have an interest in that? Because in 2008, the Illinois Enviro, and this was a letter to Mr. Spina, the, the owner of Vale Petroleum at the time, "The Environmental Protection Agency has reviewed the amended high priority corrective action completion report submitted for the above referenced incident. This incident was, is dated August 5th, 2008, and received by the Illinois EPA on August 11th, 2008." Citation in this letter are from the Environmental Protection Act, in effect prior to June 24th, 2002, and 35 Illinois Administrative Code. "The high priority corrective action completion report and associated professional engineer's certification indicates corrective action for the above referenced site was conducted in accordance with the corrective action plan approved by the Illinois EPA." And going on, it says, "Based on, based upon the certification by a licensed professional engineer pursuant to Section 5710 of the Act, your request for, for a no further remediation determination is granted under the conditions and terms specified in this letter." Goes on to say that "all statutory and regulatory corrective action requirements applicable to the occurrence have been complied with. All corrective action concerning the remediation of the occurrence has been completed, and no further corrective action concerning the occurrence is necessary for the protection of human health, safety, and the environment." What was lacking that the lender was looking for?
I, I don't know what was lacking, but I think the lender...
I mean, this, this would, I would think any lender would find this to give that property a clean bill of health.
The property's representative is here, if you'd like to ask him that question.
That'd be great. Hi.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. Barry Millman, Principal at Horizon Realty Services. We're the real estate brokers for State Street Donuts, represented the buyer throughout this process. Alderman, we were as surprised and questioning this same issue when we went under contract with the property. It had this letter from Illinois Department of Environmental Protection that there was no further action required.
Are you referring to the letter of 2008?
The letter that you just read. When it went before the lender, and after this, it occurred, this has occurred now in three other projects that I've been working on, where it's vacant land that was previously a gas station, where I E P A has submitted a no further action letter. The lenders, and this was both with Chase Bank, this property is with Inland Bank, and the third one was with Harris Bank, where it was required by the lender to do further testing on the property above what the I E P A required. In this particular situation, the first question that came up was, I E P A asked for five additional soil borings to be taken on the property. This was done, and at that point, we thought everything was fine, and we could go ahead and close. Lo and behold, the lender said there were some higher counts of various chemicals that are considered harmful, that had to be tested further. The lender then required that a Phase 2, which is additional testing on a, on a property, took place. As part of that Phase 2, they required that metal detectors be placed throughout the property, as they felt that the tanks that were underground were not fully removed, that either there were particles that remained, or there was some metal on the property. Our luck, right after that occurred, was when the snowfall came in November. They said they couldn't really do the testing until, while it was covered with snow, so we had to wait a while. We finally got the testing done. The testing was completed, maybe a month or so, maybe two months ago. Then we had to go back to the lender's environmental consultants and get their clearance. This has all delayed the process. And so, again, I am as baffled by this as you may be, as well as our consultants, but the lender's environmental consultants insisted that all of this be executed before we could close.
And?
We are now past that stage, and we're ready to close. We do have a closing date scheduled sometime during the next two weeks.
So, have you provided those environmental reports to the city?
No, we have not.
Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to ask you to chime in on that matter.
As far as I know, and I don't think it's germane to what we, what we're doing. If the, the lender for the project has requirements above and beyond what I P A, I P E A requires, that's certainly a lending requirement. But sharing that report with us is not relevant or required. We're not, I mean, that's for a lending decision if they're going to undertake or not. That's their risk.
Do we have any exposure as far as a potential class action suit at some point in time in the future?
Class action suit? As to, with respect to the quality of the property? None.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Clements?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'll ask you this, I guess, sir. Just because he did say dangerous chemicals, and I'm on the city council, and there's going to be an eating establishment there, that just makes me concerned. I know it might not even be germane to this conversation, I understand that, but it is, I don't know what to do with that, because that is a red flag. What do I do with that? I can't ask questions, so what do I...
Certainly follow up with what's asked, and what, and endeavor to learn what else this gentleman knows.
To an extent, I feel like that's what Alderman Kilburg was kind of asking, and he can't...
He asked if we have any liability. The answer's no.
Okay, but I can ask about...
If you want to know about what's there, I, I guess you can follow up and ask the gentleman if he knows.
Your, your point is well-taken, and we wouldn't be closing if there was something to the, you know, we're, we're assuming a lot of, lot of liability here, as well as Duncan is an international company. So the, being extra careful was part of our due diligence, and we wouldn't have agreed to go forward without all of this, after it was called to our attention, being properly evaluated.
I think our li, I think our liability is...
Alderman Kilburg, one moment, please, before anyone else who hasn't yet spoken. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Some familiarity with some of these issues. The, were, were additional contaminants found, they would be obliged to remediate them. So anything that has been found, I think it's fair to say, has been remediated. Thank you.
Anyone else prior to recognizing Alderman Kilburg for a second time?
I think my interest is, is the city at some point in time is going to be investing $170,000 here, and I want to make sure that our investment is, is properly cared for. Is that a legitimate question?
Oh, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
That's a legitimate statement. And, sir? Alderman Burkhart?
My question, for the city attorney, if environmental problems were discovered later, would they be able, would Duncan be able to apply to the TIF for cleanup help? Aren't cleanup environmental issues eligible for TIF reimbursement?
They can be, but not in this, it's not contemplated in this agreement. And I, we have an I E P A no further remediation letter, and I, I guess we're maybe conflating a lender that wanted higher assurances that that I P, I E P A no further remediation was clear, because they're putting money at risk. There is no liability. There is no liability to the city with respect to that.
Unless they were to come back and ask for TIF money to clean it up.
If, that would mean something's there.
Mm-hmm.
And that would mean the I E P A made a mistake and the further remediated, uh, the further inspections that this lender required made a mistake.
Got you. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you. I, I kind of look at this in the opposite vein. This is kind of a Yahoo moment for me. I mean, this is a place that had a gas station on it for many years. Uh, the I E P A has given it the stamp of approval. A lender who's got a lot of skin in the game has asked for things above and beyond which have proven to show nothing with it. The franchise has got exposure that they're going to be assuming and they're willing to do that. So, I, I kind of look at this as a, as a Yahoo moment for us with this situation rather than being concerned that somebody's going to come back on us at a later date for some type of contamination within the, within the area. And in, yeah, the, the application for the TIF is, we're contemplating what's before us now. If something were to happen later, it would be a different contemplation, but given all the, the, the testing and the, and the certification that's already gone forth, I think there's a very high level of confidence, given that, you know, somebody's willing to sink a million and a half bucks into this deal. So, anyway, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais regarding the matter at hand, which is to extend the closing date? Alderman Swanson?
Yeah, I initially oppose this and I still do for various reasons. One thing that I think we have failed to address and still haven't, and it's in our economic incentive policy, and that's to establish a clawback provision. And by that, I mean, we're giving $170,000 to build this facility with the expectation that it's going to be an ongoing business. And my question is, if in two years, we build this facility and it closes, we're out that $170,000. And I think there should be a clawback provision that if they do close and they do not continue to operate in that site, they should have to give a portion of that back, be it on the sale of the, the site or something else. So, I think a clawback provision is important to have. It's in our economic policy, economic incentive policy that we may require it. I think we should. And I think we should ongoing for all economic incentive agreements. We don't have that here. So, I continue to oppose this deal. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky?
Yeah, I guess just a point of clarification, the $170,000 figure, I, I think that's overstated for the clawback because part of that would be the econo, the sales incentive, reimbursement. So, if they went out of business, we'd be getting zero anyway, so--
The 70 would be the clawback, yes.
So, I think the 70 would be, not 170 would be.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais regarding the matter at hand, which of course is to consider the extension of the closing date for a six months? Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Clemens?
Unlike Alderman Swanson, I, I supported the incentives to begin with. But on this project, we discussed the incentives before we discussed the actual characteristics of the development. And so, at that time, I was, I was willing to provide incentives, assuming that a development, uh, agree, an agreement was reached with a development that the, that we could support. I since opposed that development. So, for me personally, um, I don't see how it logically or emotionally makes sense for me to agree to provide incentives to a project that I think is not good for the community. So, I will be voting in the negative.
Alderman Clemens?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mer-- okay, you just kind of raised a question I, I was going to float here. So, I was opposed to this project on all legs of it. And so, I, I feel like I'm in a bit of a pickle here because it's not clear to me whether or not I'm voting nearly on extending this because it didn't close, or am I still, if I, is it, does this vote tie back to the planning and the incentives? That's, that's what I'm not clear on. So, if it's just the extension, then I'm not here to try to undo the will that this council's already shown. But if this does have anything to do with the incentives or the, uh, planning, then I would certainly vote against it. Um, so I'd be curious to get input from my colleagues on that.
Do you want to chime in?
I can, yeah.
One moment, please.
I mean, as Alderman Clemens stated, this was the agreement that was approved by the city council. The reason the agreement is not in effect is because the date expired. So, this is about the date extension, but the agreement is not in effect right now.
No, sorry. They had their hands up first.
Right, all right. Alderman Clemens, you have the floor. So, you, but no, but you had posed the question in which we responded in deafening silence until, are you comfortable with that answer? We are talking about an extension of the date to closing the property. All other matters are, while lingering out there, aren't germane to the discussion tonight in my humble opinion. This is about extending the closing date by six months.
And I guess, just to clarify, if you're asking about the second action that the council approved, the special use and all that, that's, that's done. That, that, that has no bearing on this item.
Okay.
That went through the public hearing, that went through, this, this is completely separate from that.
But, okay, so now I do have to--
One second. Alderman Kilburg, then Alderman Maladra.
The, the closing date was the 30th of October, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, in other words, their failure to close means that essentially, I think you're at a point where you start over again, right? In other words, uh, everything's back on the table here, isn't it? In other words, if they failed to, to close by that date, uh, uh, Alderman Clemens, I think that this, uh, this matter is, is open for discussion in all aspects of it.
Well, actually, Alderman Kilburg, I would disagree respectfully and I'm going to ask the city attorney to chime in as well as our economic development director. Let me share with you one example of where we have done this very thing in the past twice now. In fact, it could be three times now. And that is on the property due east of the restaurant we all love in a door called Rigatino's. Rigatino's purchased the land due east of their building. They had a closing date to buy that land and raise that building. They did not meet that date. We extended the contract to do so. They came back again and said, "We can't do it." We extended the contract again. I believe we're looking at the very same issue. It's an extension of the contract to close on the land. And once closed, they move forward with the process. This is identical, in my humble opinion, to the relationship we have with our friends at Rigatino's in terms of their purchase, their closing, and their improvements to the land due east of them.
My argument is, is that there was no objections on the part of the council, so the extension was given. If there's objections here this evening and if people want to reconsider certain aspects of it, I think that that should be fair game. Now, let's, let's hear what our attorney has to say. It would be my suggestion.
The agreement expired of its own terms. It is now up to the council to determine if they wish to extend that agreement. Your process in coming to that determination is your process. If in your, use of your discretion, it's simply an untenable project, you can vote no. If you wish to simply look at it within the four corners of the agreement and simply using that as a, a marker to extend the agreement, you can vote yes. But I don't think you're confined by your prior vote, if that's what you're asking. I don't think anyone is. This is, for all intents and purposes, a new vote.
I think--
To move it to council, by the way. Remember, we're still sitting in this committee of the whole.
Right. Alderman Bruno?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I did begrudgingly vote approval for the, for the project. It was never what I wanted to see for the east side, but I've, I think I've consulted with enough, uh, experts that, uh, my, my dream development, which is not defined, uh, couldn't, uh, just cannot appear there. There, there will be no presentation of some, some better ideal project. I understand the confusion, well, not confusion, but, uh, I see the ambiguity as to what this vote can be. As the attorney says, if you don't like Duncan, then you can vote against it and that's, that's something you all have to work out. I plan on voting for the extension simply because I don't think, uh, we're going to see a better, uh, project there. Not that I'm a big fan of the development, but I don't think we'll see a better project there. Thanks.
Alderman Swanson and Maladra?
What Alderman Bruno just said there kind of sums up where I am on economic incentives and that is, it's not what I wanted to go in there. And I've heard that a lot from a lot of people. And, and I guess I have a huge problem giving taxpayer money to put in something that I don't really want there, or it's the best we're going to put in there. So, for that reason alone, I think it's good reason for everyone to reconsider that. If it's not something we want there or it's not what, it's, it's the best we can do, is that a good reason to give $170,000 of taxpayer money for this deal? So, consider that with your vote. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
So, two things. I agree completely with Alderman Kilburg and thank you for clarifying it. To me, the agreement expired, so the extension in and of itself is a brand new agreement. Uh, can have the same terms, but it's sort of starting over. And then a point of clarification--
Hold my microphone.
It's not on-- Still, point of clarification, it's not a vote against Duncan. Um, it's a vote against the project that they were proposing to put on this site. Had Duncan done a few things differently or whatever, I may very well have supported it. I just don't want people thinking that this is a vote against a particular business or a particular chain or anything else. It's a vote against a particular use at a particular location that I was, had a problem with.
Alderman Bruno?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. To Alderman Swanson's point, I just want to be clear that I don't, uh, I'm not saying it wouldn't be, uh, a significant economic stimulus. It's just not, it just was not in my vision as how to take the character from the west side and drag it over, over to the east side. I, I don't really have any doubt that it will, uh, be a decent, um, economic engine and, um, worthy of some incentives. Thanks.
Alderman Rodecky, then Alderman Kilburg?
Well, I guess since we're going to relitigate the matter here, I might as well get a shot to it here while we're on it.
You don't, you don't have to.
But I'm going to.
But the, the horse is dead.
Yes, his mouth, yeah.
Borrow a phrase that--
I, I thought it was, but apparently it's not.
I know.
Because I, I would have gone with the, let's just vote on the extension, trust me. But since we're not, here we are. Uh, look, what is it that you want there? I mean, you know, it's something I don't want there. Nobody, tell me what you want. What are you going to hold out for? How long is that going to be? It's a, it's a vacant property for four or five years. There was a gas station on it. It's on State Street. It's on a state route. It's, you know, to, to me, my position is, this is, this is an absolutely acceptable development. It may be the catalyst to jumpstart some things there. I want to see something start to happen there. Uh, you know, it is what it is on that side and then thinking that you can import something from the west side that, like, it's better than moving it over to the east side, I think that that's a, that's not the way to view the project. So, anyway, I'm, I'm in support of it. I, I think if I had to reconsider one other thing, we are very heavy with the economic incentives with both ends of it, both TIF and the sales. That I would listen to some discussion about, but, you know, I'm at the point right now that I think that it's a, it's a, a very appropriate development for that site, particularly given the history and where we've been at and, and how it's been vetted. So, you know, this, the design is going to be the new design of a Duncan. It's going to be a little less, it's going to be much more understated than some of the other ones, I guess. I think it will fit in fine. And as I've said before, we tend to over awfulize an awful lot of things here that never seem to come to fruition for some of the developments that we've approved. They don't tend to kill other businesses. They don't change people's lifestyles. People are not run over by cars and things of that nature. So, please try to keep in mind some of the history we've had here. We tend to approve very appropriate things that go through a very rigorous process. This has gone on for years now. So, with that said, I will be in support of it. For all the above. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not looking at you. Alderman Swanson?
I just wanted to say, uh, I understand--
Can I skip over you? I apologize.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to react to Alderman Rodecky when, when you said, "It's just on East State. There's a neighborhood back there. There are homes that abut it. So, there's more to consider than it just being on East State." I represent that community and a lot of the people who live around it do not want it. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg, my apologies?
No, that's all right. Um, you know, I don't want to relitigate our discussion of 2018 as it relates to this subject. I guess the point that I would like to make is, is that there have been changes as it relates to the neighborhood there at that intersection. And with the demolition of the old chiropractic office and the moving of the house, really, the opportunity for redevelopment there and, and something, uh, more comprehensive possibly for the, the south side of East State Street, I think has been enhanced by what's developed there since we had this discussion last summer. That, uh, it has a different look and somebody may look at, at, at that streetscape and see it a lot differently today than they may have, uh, 12 months ago. And, uh, that's all I had to say. I'm, you know, I think we can talk about all the things that we talked about, uh, nine months ago and rehash all of it, but I think this is a new development as it relates to adjacent properties that I think should be a consideration as well. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, coming into this, you know, I largely looked at this as, as just, just a discussion of whether or not we extend the agreement. I asked for all of your input and every single person has basically been arguing the pros and cons of this project. It seems that it has come back to it's a vote on the agreement, not extending it. Um, like, whether you're for it or against it, everybody's given their pros and cons. So, it seems like the council has framed this as a discussion as to whether or not, you know, it's, it's about the agreement. It's about the whole thing, it seems, from everybody's discussion here tonight. So, that's just all I wanted to say. Seems like that's the direction we're, we're going in.
Alderman Marx?
Well, what I'm going to say, and it pertains to this, is since I've been on the council, we've been looking for something to kickstart that part of, of the town. And, you know, we knew all along it was going to take some, some of the city's money to do that. And we've waited a long time to find somebody to come in to trying to give us a little kick over there. So, I, I'm for it just because I think it's going to be something that starts, starts the ball rolling on that side of town. And we've been looking for that. I've been on the council 10 years and we've been discussing the east side and trying to get it started with development. So, I think here is our opportunity.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor Burns. Um, Alderman Swanson, I believe you mentioned that, um, this proposed project exists in a neighborhood with homes. And that's precisely why I'm in favor of the Duncan going in. I've heard it be said that there really isn't a place for people to go that's walkable, and I'm referring to residents who live on the east side. You can't really hang out at a gas station. You can't go inside on a cold day and, and have a bagel or a cup of coffee or a donut at a gas station or an empty lot for that matter. It's private property currently. So, uh, while there, there is no perfect solution for this location. And I would argue there is no perfect solution for any location, but because I feel that there's such a great added value in this business for all ages. Young people, older people, they can go and walk and that builds community. They can walk in there. You don't even have to be a paying customer. We know that because of some issues with Starbucks that have been in the news in the last year. They will have a restroom there. It's just a place for people to go and gather and enjoy some refreshments. So, I feel that that's hugely lacking on the east side of town right now. The drive-through is an added bonus. You can argue for or against the merits of having a drive-through, but for people with mobility issues or, uh, someone with a young child in the backseat, they don't want to wake them up or get them in and out of a car. That's important to a lot of mothers that are in Geneva. Maybe that seems frivolous, but I, but it's lacking and this business would be really special for a lot of people. So, you know, you, you do hear complaints, but, um, from some people that are totally, some Geneva residents that are totally against a plan like this, but out of our town of over 22,000, I'd argue that all of the people that you don't hear from are okay with this plan. that you don't hear from are okay with this plan. So, you really need to kind of put that into perspective. So, I am definitely in favor of this plan. How, how much longer is this council willing to wait? If we turn this down now, here we talked about, you know, paying $60,000 for a comprehensive assessment of all the maintenance needs that we know all of our aging city buildings need. This is going to be a huge economic boon for the town. We are investing a little bit, but that's going to be needed no matter what goes into this location. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. I'm just definitely in favor of the Duncan going in, and I'll be sorely disappointed if it doesn't go through. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
Sorry.
That's right.
Since we're all rehashing why we took the position we took on the development itself, I will add the reason for my opposition, which was, I, I think that everything that Alderman McGowan just described about having a place people can walk to is all well and good. I just have a problem with a drive-through in a residential neighborhood. I looked at all the drive-throughs from the Wendy's on the east side to the Panera out on Randall Road, and in all of them save this location, there is a buffer of commercial or light industrial between the drive-through use and the nearest residential property. The Wendy's might be an exception, but that, that residential property is three times as far away from the drive-through as the nearest residential property is for this use. The only other time we looked at a drive-through in a residential neighborhood was for another proposed Duncan in the fourth ward, and the council voted against it at that time as well. Not necessarily because we didn't like drive-throughs in residential locations, but we felt that that particular site was not the best. So, I just wanted to put it out there with all the other reasons why we are for or against it. At the end of the day, Mike, what this is, is can I really give money to somebody to do something that I think ought not to be done? And I don't see how I can do that.
Anyone else in the day? We have a motion. We have a second. Madam Recording Secretary?
Do I need to say anything?
My law? No. But, but if you'd like to.
I'd like to.
Welcome.
I didn't know we weren't able to speak.
Not a public hearing.
Tom Simonian. First of all, I'm against this project for a whole lot of reasons. But at the very least, if you are for this project, I would highly recommend you vote no on this extension, because the council made, in my opinion, two major errors on the first one. One is, I do not believe that this requires or should have been given a sales tax. The TIF, it goes with the property, and I can understand that. But a sales tax is setting a dangerous precedent in this kind, in this particular situation, and they're already getting the, the TIF money. Two is, I believe with the traffic there, this should require a right-in, right-out only until the East State corridor is completed, and then when you have a turning lane, they can then go to a, a, right-in, right-left, all that other lovely stuff. But I come down that road on a regular basis, and allowing cars to go left into that, along with the way the traffic goes left already there, is going to create a nightmare. And having cars coming out and attempting to go left or west on State, on State Street from there, is going to create some serious problems until you get that middle turning lane. So, at the very least, I would recommend you vote no on the extension, unless you can add a motion to it to get rid of the taxpayer rebate and the, and make it right-in, right-out only until the corridor is done. Thank you.
Motion has seconds on the floor. Madam Recording Secretary, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Sarah Burkhardt?
Nay.
Michael Clements?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
What is the vote?
Nay.
And Robert Swanson?
Nay.
Motion is a tie at five to five. The chair votes aye to move this along to the city council. We are a new business, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, forget, oh, we're going, well, after public comments, do you need to sneak out?
Yeah.
Feel free, because, yeah, this will be, we're a new business, ladies and gentlemen, in public comment. Anyone from the audience, any new business and/or public comment? Yes.
Hi, it's me again. I know it's getting late, so hopefully we can...
Jen, we all know who you are, but if you could, just for the record, state your name. Thank you very much.
I, I'm Jen Gustafson. I was here last week with city council with questions and concerns that I have about compliance with the city ordinance concerning fees not being billed to applicants seeking a historic district nomination. And I'm here tonight hoping to learn more about the city's disinclination to bring their practices in line with that statute.
I think the city is in full compliance with the ordinance. It is required per 10-66A3 a deposit. That is simply a deposit. Whether fees or allocable costs are to be indeed allocated depends on what happens. So, we have explicitly abided by the ordinance by requiring a payment of $500 per the ordinance. That doesn't foreclose any examination of what should be allocated, if anything.
But the city's position posted online is that the applicants will not be required to pay the attorney fees.
No, the...
I don't think it says that.
Yeah, I can, forgive me.
You don't mind?
Yeah, I've got it right here. Oh, I did. The statement reads, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm referring to page four of four, under Just the Facts, South Geneva Historic District, Petition Number Two, dated February 26, 2019. It reads, "Under the penultimate paragraph, which states, 'Which costs associated with the petition will be billed to the applicant and which will be paid by the, by the taxpayers.' Update, March 8. Upon further review by legal counsel due to a citizen inquiry at the March 4 city council meeting, the answer above remains the same. The answer above was, based on prior legal opinion, only those costs resulting from an applicant's direct requests or actions beyond those rights and privileges afforded an applicant under city ordinance may be recovered from an applicant. Other expenses, including legal review, staff time, that are ordinary in the course of the city review of any application or request, are not assignable to the applicant. Similarly, related legal or staff expenses generated by residents opposing or supporting an application or action permitted by ordinance are not attributable to an applicant."
I understand that statement, and I still strongly disagree. Our ordinance says that the applicant shall bear all costs associated with the application and designation process. Further, this statute enumerates a number of fees that should be assigned to the applicant, including public meetings, hearings, notice publication, mailings, attorney's fees, and staff time. If the, if the city is willing to ask that the applicant pay for nothing more than mailing the notice that is required, but then the city wants the taxpayers to foot the bill of trying to protect the application from objection, that is...
That's, that's a, that's a, we are not protecting the application from objection. We are preserving the integrity of the process. And you and I discussed this today. We have a right to legal representation as well.
You do have a right to legal representation, of course. The, the fact sheet that you read mentioned that this opinion is based on a prior legal opinion sought. Can we see the prior legal opinion?
The legal opinion was verbal, and it was by me and the attorney who will be handling the matter when it comes before the HPC, the Committee of the Hall if it does, and the city of, county, city council if it does.
Okay. And are you the, are you the attorney that had to recuse yourself from this matter?
I'm of the, the firm that has, yes.
So, the firm had to recuse, not you personally?
Correct.
And are you at liberty to share what the reason was for the recusal?
The reason for the recusal, Mr. Finson is the attorney who recused himself because he has a of-council relationship with one of the residents within the proposed historic district who happens to support the historic district.
Okay.
So, it makes complete sense. And because Mr. Finson is part of the firm, the entire firm should recuse itself for obvious reasons.
That, that is absolutely appropriate. And I do believe that having outside council cover this makes it that much easier to assign the expenses to the applicants. Myself and a group of concerned taxpayers and people who are impacted by this district have an attorney who did write an opinion that I'd like to share with the council.
Of course. This is an active testimony here. Would you like me to read for the record what this, who this is addressed to, or you're going to do that?
It would be wonderful. If you could read that first, Mayor.
Well, I'm not going to read the whole thing, for God's sake, because there's not enough cookies. But just for the record, ladies and gentlemen, this is a letter dated March 7, 2019, addressed to Paul Zellmer, Chairman, Historic Preservation Commission. So, it's, this is correspondence between, I'm assuming retained legal counsel and Mr. Zellmer.
Yes.
Okay.
You and the, and Ms. Dawkins should also have been copied on this.
Yep.
It was delivered via FedEx last week, on Friday. Pardon me?
I didn't have your copy.
It hasn't...
The name is on here, but I have not...
Yeah, it hasn't arrived yet, just so, just so you know.
All right. We can confirm with the delivery receipts after that.
No problem.
Thank you for letting me know that that...
Sure. We have it now. Life is good.
This letter from council is now part of the record, so I guess anybody that wants to see it can see it. So, I'll summarize. But our attorney points out that our code requires reimbursement from the applicant for all of these fees, including all the costs that I just enumerated. And although the applicants have deposited $500 towards the cost, the true cost is likely to be many times that, the cost of staff time, information meetings, public notices, hearings, transcripts, and costs of outside council. The code section provides that the cost of the applicants must be, the applicants must reimburse the cost. My attorney and I agree that it is inappropriate to proceed with the public hearing until an accounting can be made to ask the applicants to cover these costs. In our ordinance and in the application packet instructions that we discussed on Monday, the ordinance outlines the fees that need to be covered. The application packet says that the nomination process will not continue until the applicant has paid the accrued additional expenses.
It doesn't say that.
And the application instructions do say that. The application instructions...
The application deposit fee for the nomination of a historic landmark shall be $500.
Yes.
That deposit, excuse me, that deposit is set in the ordinance. What you are speaking to are potential expenses that would be incurred after a hearing and the, and the process goes forward. What it appears to be that you're arguing is that you think a further deposit is required, because you and your council anticipate more expense that may or may not accrue. The ordinance is clear, unambiguous, unmistakable, and written in black and white that the deposit is $500. It has been paid. Nothing else has incurred. What has incurred is frankly, expense from objectors, which may or may not be taxable to the applicant. That is to be determined. So, what I think you're asking is to stop things because you think more expense will incur, and you want that paid or prepaid. That is not what the ordinance says.
The ordinance does say 500. The application instructions, which our applicant has signed that they have read and comply with, including the application certification saying that they will provide extra monies to cover extra costs, all say that there, that there will be attorney fees covered. There has been an outside attorney employed to work on this matter. That outside attorney has been spending time reviewing objections. Objections are something that all of the citizens are allowed to make.
Absolutely.
And it is a ridiculous statement to suggest that objections are not a direct cost of the application. Objections would not come forward but for this application having been made. Paying for those object, for the review of those objections with taxpayer dollars instead of applicant dollars removes the intention of the ordinance, which was to shift the cost onto the applicant instead of the taxpayer, and it is incredibly inappropriate. Additionally, while the, while the statute does spell out a $500 deposit, it does not preclude adding to that deposit. The legislative history shows us that part of the change in this ordinance was to bring it in line with other community development projects. And if you review the ordinance for all the other community development projects, they simply say, "Shall file an application with the Community Development Department, which application shall be accompanied by a non-refundable fee established from time to time by city council." Already, the historic district application fee is refundable, so there is no harm in asking for a larger deposit to offset the costs that we know that we are already incurring. And there is precedent for using the instructions in the application packet for projects going through the Community Development Office, such as historic landmark and historic district nominations, to be governed, in part at least, by the application instructions themselves. And I'll just note, as a side note, the deposit fees on the other community development projects, even for putting a non-conforming sign on your own property, are much higher than the burden for the historic district landmarking, where we have a neighbor trying to landmark other people's houses against their will. And when this happened before, with a neighbor trying to landmark a house, I have an email from Michael Lambert outlining the expenses before getting to the public hearing, and those expenses at that time, which are not all the expenses enumerated in this very clear ordinance, added up to over $1,000. A $500 deposit and refusing to stop and look at what costs have actually been incurred, and refusing to assign them to the applicants as the ordinance states and intends, is inappropriate. And there's literally no harm in delaying the public hearing until this information can be found. I would like to share Michael Lambert's email with the precedent of assigning these costs to applicants in the past. And as I do that, I want to point out that this was done in 2013, when our ordinance was less clear than it is now. We have a more clear ordinance that more specifically enumerates the cost to be borne by the applicant. We're charging them a $500 refundable deposit. There's no reason not to charge them the things that the ordinance says we should. And to delay the hearing until we can figure that out. I am not trying to contravene this process. I'm trying to make sure that we follow the rules that you wrote. So, I would, I would welcome comment.
Thank you. I guess I have a couple of comments and maybe a suggestion. For one thing, you know, I, I'm not comfortable in this under new business. We're continuing to have this discussion back and forth as to whether or not our process is properly being followed. I think there's a better way to do this, and I, and I think it makes a lot of sense to get this on an agenda, have a discussion, vet the facts, and make a decision. to get this on an agenda, have a discussion, vet the facts, and make a decision whether or not the counsel, who I think has the final say in this, is following our ordinances or not. From a personal perspective, to me, having been involved intimately with this process, I think the four corners of the, of the ordinance speak for themselves, and I, and I agree with Ms. Gustafson that it says what it says, and certainly the application process says what, what it says. Besides the, the four corners of it, speaking clearly in my opinion, the other thing is the spirit and intent behind it was clearly, as sitting for a year and a half going through this, it was in fact to get some skin in the game with people that were going to attempt to encumber or someone else's property with a historic designation against their will that it would put some skin in the game for them and for somebody that would object to it. That was very clearly part of what I think our discussion had, and if you look at the months and months of discussion, I think that was part of the spirit and intent behind some of the language that we put in it. Third, we wrote the thing. If there's, it's, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but if it's ambiguous, we wrote it. I mean, who gets the benefit of the interpretation of it? It's kind of like a contract of adhesion, in my opinion, you know? Play a lawyer right now. We, we wrote it. If it's, it's ambiguous, we could have written it a different way. We could have said it in a clearer manner. So with those things said, you know, the, we're talking about creating an additional historic district on homes that have been there for 150 or 175 years. I see absolutely no harm, and I, and I think it lends integrity to our process. The last thing we want to do is get involved with are commissions. We stay out of their business. We want them to function separately, and we want recommendations from them independent of any input from us. I get that. But we're, we're, the integrity of the process is at risk by not following what the statute says, so I think it's a different thing. I think it's wrong to go ahead and, and proceed with the hearing on the 19th until we have some clarity and some agreement, and I think that the question, the ultimate answer to the question, lies with the members of the city council rather than a verbal opinion and, you know, the banter that goes back and forth. I think it needs to have a little bit more formal structure around it, and I don't see any harm with taking a little bit of time to measure twice and cut once and, and do it correctly, because I think it's going to have applications or potential ramifications for things that have happened in the past and things that are certainly going to happen in the future. So it would be my recommendation that we not continue to debate this under new business, that we seek to get an extension from the, from the 19th, put it on the agenda, maybe get some clarity around both sides of the issue, and let the council decide it. Thank you very much.
Alderman Clemens?
Thank you, Mayor. You said most of that much more eloquently than I would have been able to. I was wondering the same thing. Do we just go back and forth every week, every Monday with somebody here in the attorney? It was unclear to me what, what our role is right now in this. You know, we don't want to interfere in the process, get involved where we're not supposed to, but it seems that there has to be something. We can't just sit here silently every, every Monday evening. So that's what I was looking for, is some sort of guidance. Do we have a conversation about this at some point? What, what do we do here with this? You know, that, that's what the clarification I was looking for. Is it, is it coming into our domain now, or are we still just waiting for things to get done through the, through the HPC and then it comes to us eventually? I know it ultimately does come to us, but do we have a discussion of some sort beforehand? And I don't know. That's why I'm asking. I really don't know.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor.
Excuse me.
Not to go down a rabbit hole, we all went through that discussion. I am eminently comfortable with the intent as to how we wrote that ordinance, including the intent, if I recall correctly, we spent a lot of time figuring out what that $500 number should be. There's nothing that precludes extracting far more money from the applicant. I am perfectly comfortable that we are following my ordinance in good faith and with the original intent. Thank you.
For the record, I don't think I extended an invitation to Jen, but you and I had a conversation that you are always more than welcome to appear before a committee of the whole or a council, whether it be under new business, public comment, and express whatever you'd like to express. So, you know, I have, I'm not uncomfortable with respect to Jen being present and/or any of the other neighbors, nor am I uncomfortable with speaking with Jen or with Katie or others, but I have been very cautious as of certain Jen and Katie would explain that I don't have the authority, nor do I believe the city council does either, to say to the HPC, "Delay things. We're going to discuss this more." I think it is wildly risky to do that. The fact of the matter is, folks, this letter addressed to Mr. Zellmer is to the HPC. Mr. Zellmer, as chairman of the HPC, has the opportunity and perhaps even the responsibility to say to his fellow commissioners, without violating the Open Meetings Act, "Perhaps it's in our best interest to delay. Would you prefer to move forward," et cetera. I think that responsibility rests with that independent commission. My opinion. So, yes, sir.
Thank you. I disagree. I think we have a bona fide dispute here right now. I, I think that there's legitimate grounds for that, and, and I look at it again in a little different vein. I think it's being fair to the applicant to let them know what they may be staring at, that there needs to be clarity if in fact there is a dispute. I mean, Mike and I have two different positions on it, but there's a lot of other people sitting here that may have some other opinions, but they don't have the facts in front of them. We do not have a written opinion supporting it. You know, we have a verbal opinion. So, you know, I think that this is just as much to be fair to the applicant. I would not want to go forward on the 19th if I were them, not knowing what, you know, what the position's going to be of the council as far as, as fees. So I think, I think integrity to the process, I think it's fair to the applicant, I think it's fair to the objectors to get, make sure that we're all clear on how the ground rules are going to be interpreted. You have an opinion? You know, everyone has one, but I do think that that decision, it's, it's inappropriate to let the chairman of the HPC make the decision whether or not, you know, to make the proper interpretation of the statute at that point when there's been such an objection raised at this point. That'd be my opinion.
Right. Forgive me if I, if I misspoke. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Zellmer, as chairman of the HPC, has every right to confer with his counsel regarding the interpretation of the ordinance. And I don't think we, as a separate organization, should interfere with that review, because ultimately, as you and Alderman Clemens and others have said, this ultimately rests on our desk, whether it be via the trigger of the two-thirds, whether it be a straight, you know, who knows? But in fact, I believe tonight we're perilously close to stating our opinion ahead of the fact, ahead of the matter, and can be held responsible for stating such an opinion. So I overly cautious by design, as Jen and Katie and others know.
I understand that caution, but in a circumstance where the, just the fact sheet that's laid out the responses to the, the fee obligation to applicants was not published until February 26th, that was after the last HPC meeting, and the next HPC meeting is the 19th, where the public hearing is happening. How do you suggest that citizens address this if we can't come to the council or the committee of the whole to enforce their own ordinances?
Well, I, I'll take a stab at this. I think we, I think there's, there seems to be a disagreement with respect to interpretation of the ordinance, obviously.
There seems to be a disagreement between a couple of us about the interpretation of the ordinance, for sure.
I'm not saying me and you. I'm saying-
No, I'm-
Corporate authority to-
Yes, no, I, there's a verbal legal opinion and the, and my opinion and the opinion of my attorneys and what appear to be, as Alderman Rodecky put it, the four corners of the statute. It's-
Do I get to say something? You do get to say something, but before you do, and of course, and I'm going to, I'm going to echo Jen's statements from March 4th. This is not a hostile environment, nor should it be-
It's not, but I feel that I'm, I'm left without options here. If the commission can't recommend-
Well, let me finish, then perhaps some options will arise magically-
Wonderful.
In the spirit of Marshall Brodin, God rest his soul. Now, what I hear you saying, Jen, respectfully, is, and you and I had this brief conversation today, why can't the council tell HPC to delay this darn thing? That's, I don't think that's our job.
Doesn't the HPC serve as a commission who are appointed by you at the advising, well, not at the advice, the consent of the-
Yes. They are an independent advisory board.
Consent of our elected officials?
No, no. They are an independent advisory board that serves the community. They do not serve the city council independently or collectively. I mean, otherwise, with all due respect, every issue would be political. If I was to call the chairman tonight and say, "Man, getting a lot of heat. Let's delay that thing," that'd be inappropriate. I should be held accountable.
But 11 of the people that I'm speaking to tonight are politicians.
Well, politicians, you obviously use it as pejorative. I don't.
I am not using that as a pejorative.
I can also assure you-
I'm using that as a descriptor for your job right here.
I would prefer policymaker, but nevertheless, politicians, fine. And I can assure you, Jen, and I know you know this, that every member of the Historic Preservation Commission is tuning in this evening, as they did or re-watch the meeting on March 4th. To assume that the HPC is not aware of what's percolating is, is silly, because they do.
So they're, in their service to the citizens, we just have to wait and hope that on the 19th everything goes fine and that this-
Well, no, you haven't waited, though. You haven't waited. You've already wrote, penned a letter through your counsel to the chairman saying, "Delay this." So isn't it responsible?
Requesting, not demanding, and I have not asked the council here to demand a delay either. I have asked the council to ask for a delay.
Well, no.
Because I think it's inappropriate to continue.
Let me read the one-
I asked for a delay, and I asked for a response. I did not demand, I did not make any threats, and neither did my attorney.
No, I'm not, I didn't say you threatened anything. Now it's just a matter of semantics, Jen, but it says here, "The hearing on the district nomination should not go ahead."
It should not.
Okay, but that's not up to us. That's up to Mr. Zellmer and the HPC as an independent body.
So without violating the Open Meetings Act, when the public statement comes through after their last meeting and their next meeting is the public hearing, how do I have this conversation with the commission, with the HPC?
You can certainly call each one of them, as you have with all of us and written with all of us, and the chairman can speak to, I believe it's seven of the boards or, what, one or two, one at a time, and that's the prerogative of the chair.
Okay, so the advice from the dais is that I should start badgering the HPC?
There's no advice from the dais. What I'm saying to you is, I will not, I will not poison the independence of the HPC nor any other standing or ad hoc committee in order to, well, I will not, I will not poison the independence of any such committee or commission. I will not.
I suppose that my frustration at hitting this backstop here is that I do not believe asking them to wait in order to provide this accounting actually poisons the process.
But you already did, though.
I think that-
So, that's fine. I think you should, that's great. I have no objection to this, nor should I. But you have made the request, Jen, correct?
I have made the request.
Okay.
I have heard no response. Have you heard any response?
This is the first I've seen of it. I told you by phone today. I haven't seen a letter, so, nor would the chairman call me and say, "What do you think, Kev?" I wouldn't take the call.
Okay, well, if, if council and the mayor all agree that it is inappropriate for council to act in enforcement of this ordinance, then I will-
That's not what we're saying, Jen. That's not what we're saying. Clever, but incorrect. That's not what I'm saying.
You said that it was the-
What I'm saying is, I will not involve myself, nor do I believe the city council should involve itself, on requesting, telling, demanding, or asking another independent committee to act a certain way when this matter is not yet before that committee.
Are you directing the council to not discuss the ordinance issue that I've brought forth?
No, they discuss it all they want.
Okay, well, I guess that's all that I can ask of you guys tonight, since this was not put on the agenda, you can't have a vote on it.
Correct.
So-
Correct, we can't have a vote on it.
What I, what I can ask for is a discussion.
If the council members wish to engage you in discussion, that's up to them.
I hope the council members wish to engage each other in discussion. I've-
Two by two, as you well know.
Or publicly.
Well, yeah, 48-hour notice is required, et cetera. And I would highly recommend, and I would seek counsel advice, that nor should this be put on the agenda until such time as the HPC has determined whether or not to continue with, postpone, delay, whatever, their public hearing. We're leapfrogging the process, folks. Alderman Maladra?
I believe in the process as much as anybody else, in maintaining the integrity of the process, and I would, I agree that it would be wrong for any member of this council to call any member of a commission and say, "Hey, you know that proposal? I think you should do X, Y, or Z." However, what I'm wondering about, and this is for you, Attorney Sandak, when we think there might be some confusion regarding our own law, is it not incumbent upon us to inform the HPC that their proceedings might be based on shaky ground?
Absolutely not. What your good question should follow with is a motion or a request that it be put on an agenda. If, for instance, Alderman Rodecky thinks there's ambiguity and thinks that language changes should be made, he should bring, or anyone, I don't wish to point you out, but you can bring a request that language be revisited. That's entirely appropriate, anytime, over any issue that's within your Geneva Code.
Right, but anything else would be interference with-
However, we have a matter pending before a tribunal that's been assigned. And Alderman Rodecky, I have to respond to one thing. This ordinance is absolutely clear, and I'm, I've read this opinion. The application is the application. The ordinance is the ordinance. If we want staff to make the application read or completely be consistent with the ordinance, which I suggest would be a good thing, that should be had. But the ordinance is unambiguously clear, and I read the opinion, and the opinion's the same as mine. What they're asking is to prepay something based on expectations that these expenses will be X or Y. Well, that may be the case, but we don't know what those expenses will be until the hearing and process ensues. Perhaps there's an instance where the deposit ought to be made more, or maybe staff ought to be given that discretion. To your point, Alderman Maladra, that should be in new language, but the ordinance says $500, period. It's a mandate. It is clear, unambiguous. What Ms. Gustafson, council wants, is to stop the process, to make reasonable assurances that payment can be made, and prepay something more than what our ordinance requires. That would require an ordinance change. I would suggest if an ordinance change is necessary, it be made independent of what's now pending, because that would be, I think, thwarting process and potentially prejudicing that process. So if anyone wishes to change the ordinance, make your language changes or ask that language be reviewed. That's fair, but to do so now, I think, would be unfair, and I would highly advise against it.
The ordinance does request the-
Alderman Maladra still has the floor, Jen. One moment, please.
I apologize.
That's okay.
No, you answered my question. I do think that we need to be careful about, about maintaining the integrity of the process. We are elected officials, but that doesn't mean we are politicians. We're not going to be Alderman Burke and interfere with the process and say, "Go this way or that." I was thinking, though, that somebody needs to inform the HPC that there is this, well, maybe, and you think it's clear. See, I get confused when the lawyers get involved. I'm going to shut up now.
The ordinance is clear. Apparently, the application has language that may be less than clear, or perhaps, perhaps even conflicts with our ordinance, and so I would suggest we need to clarify that and make them fully consistent. But if you want to change something, or anyone does, that's fair.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate changing anything on the fly, under the gun, in a reflexive fashion like this. This kind of stuff, it took us two and a half years to create the thing that we have, and doing anything in short order like that is just going to create more disaster. But I do want to make sure that, that the, the process can take place, maintaining not just the integrity of the process, but the integrity of the city, respecting all rights and everything else afforded to app, neighbors and everybody, so.
Jen?
The applica, the ordinance does say that there is a $500 deposit. The ordinance does not say that there will not be other monies collected. And in line with the other community development projects and the application language and, and the signed application certification by each of the applicants, it is very clear that the fees could be more. We have not figured out what those fees are, and the city's position-
They, they're not what they are until they are what they are. And so, I hear you, and what I said originally was, the fees are incurred when they're incurred. They're known after the process plays itself out. What you're asking is to make them prepay something based on speculation that your lawyer says is going to be thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. He may be right. He may be wrong. We don't know. The ordinance says a $500 deposit is mandated. It's been paid. The process has not ensued. It is going forward. So expenses that will be allocable and are allocable will then be determined and made known.
My issue is not with the deposit. My issue is with the city's position that there is a difference between handling objections and costs that are directly related to the application. and costs that are directly related to the application.
I think you've just changed positions. You were saying, "We think we should stop the process because there's gonna be a lot incurred," and now you're saying, "Now you think that's okay, it's about the objectors."
I'm saying we should pause...
Why don't you let the process play itself out?
No, I'm saying we should pause the process. The process will play itself out. I think it appropriately should. I think that the public hearing is appropriate, I think that coming back to city council for the last vote is appropriate, I think having an opportunity for every impacted property owner is appropriate. I think that that follows the values that we have in this city of letting everybody come up and annoy you like I am right now. But what I think is not appropriate is that we have hired an outside attorney who has been spending time reviewing the, the objections, and we aren't showing any inclination to bill the applicants for it. In fact, the city's position is a disclaimer...
Who said that wasn't gonna be billed? I think I said from the get-go, "We don't know what the expenses are," because it hasn't played itself out.
Couldn't you please clarify what you mean by "play itself out"? How far do you want to take it before we start billing?
Well, it hasn't been a hearing!
But there has been work done on it, there has been staff time put in this since July, there's been attorney's fees put into this. These are...
Well, there hasn't been attorney's fees since July, I can assure you of that.
No, I didn't say since July for the attorney fees. There's been staff time since July, comma, there have been attorney's fees. There are fees, there are costs that are being borne by taxpayers because it's being paid out of the general budget that should be sent to the applicants. There, there are costs along the way, and the application language says that the remedy is that until the costs are paid, the process pauses. It does not derail the whole thing, it doesn't end it.
There's a pause?
Yeah, the application language does say that.
Okay, the ordinance doesn't?
No, the ordinance does not, because the ordinance... That's all you're concerned with. The ordinance is complete and exists in a vacuum with no legislative history, no information from the application instructions, and no play-in by the signed applicant certification.
The ordinance is what guides the process?
Yes.
The process has barely begun, there hasn't even been an initial hearing. You want to stop the process and tax the applicant with whatever expenses has incurred to date, right?
I want to pause the process. I don't want to take this process off the rails. I, I want to see this go to fruition.
Okay.
I want to have the applicant billed for the incurred costs as they are accrued, rather than wait until the end. What is the deterrent function if we wait until the end and the process is done?
Because nothing's been billed yet, and nothing's been allocated yet.
There's been no, no allocation of the staff hours that have been spent on this since July?
No.
Why not?
Okay, now this is getting super elongated. Your letter was about delaying the process because you believe attorney's fees should be taxable and other expenses prepaid based on allocations yet to come.
The letter...
And I've, and I've expressed to you that is not what the ordinance says, that in each instance, the city has abided by the ordinance, and that I believe, in my opinion, to deviate from the ordinance and bring in the council at this point would be prejudicial and frankly unhelpful and harmful. That's my opinion.
I appreciate that. I just, I, I differ with your opinion in the fact that the ordinance says that staff time is one of the enumerated costs that the applicant will bear in having been burdened with bearing all costs associated with the application and designation process.
We don't disagree. You just, you, you think they ought to pay it now, apparently as they go. That's what you think, and that's not in the ordinance.
The ordinance does not specify when they should pay.
That's right.
The application instructions do.
The ordinance says they have a $500 deposit and they've paid it. That's what the ordinance says.
Mm-hmm. But you have agreed that there could be other costs that would be assignable to the applicants beyond that $500.
They accrue. We're talking in circles now.
No, I'm agreeing with you. I'm trying to clarify.
Thank you.
I am agreeing with you that the costs should be billed to the applicant as they accrue.
When they accrue.
When they accrue.
Right.
And those costs are enumerated in the ordinance. And the costs enumerated in the ordinance include staff time, and staff has been spending time on this since at least July. I don't understand how those costs have not accrued.
Okay.
Can you explain how the costs of staff time have not accrued?
I didn't say they didn't accrue, they just haven't been allocated to the petitioner yet or the applicant.
Well, why have they not been allocated if they're supposed to be allocated when they accrue?
I don't know.
Okay.
But that's not what the ordinance requires. There's no timing requirement. I know you want this process slowed down, and I know you want the applicant paying daily or weekly or monthly expense.
I want the applicant paying appropriate expenses at appropriate times, because as you know from being an attorney, there is a complete, there is a difference between having a judgment and actually having that judgment fulfilled.
Yeah, I do.
If we wait until the end and this process is already settled...
You only get a judgment at the end, you should know that, counselor.
Well, you can get injunctions in the process, and I'm trying to save the taxpayers money here.
Not a money judgment, counselor. You get money at the end when you get a judgment. You don't get to, you don't get to collect something until it's due.
Let's all take a deep breath. Alderman Berger?
I've been quiet because I'm trying to figure out the best way forward on this, and it's muddy, muddy, muddy waters. But as I play it out in my head, if we follow our city attorney's advice and let the hearing go forward, and perhaps HPC, you know, advances it to us, perhaps the district gets pulled back, perhaps it fails at HPC level, and we discern that the applicant owes $5,000, and we bill the applicant $5,000. We bill the applicant $5,000, right? And I guess the worst-case scenario is the applicant, what, moves to Batavia and refuses to pay? I mean, I, I guess I feel like we're under this process, we, we kinda have, we're in the midst of this. We have to continue to move forward, and even if we decided that we need to clean up our ordinance or dive back into the application, that wouldn't really affect what's already been filed and what's been underwork, but worked on since the summer. I understand your frustration and I, but I, I'm frustrated too that I, I feel like, well, are we ever gonna get to the meat of the matter of discussing a proposed historic district? Or we just feel, every time it even, you know, gets proposed, it feels like it gets gummed up in this, and we spent a year and a half thinking we did a really good job with transparency and notification, and maybe we fell down again because we didn't make the deposit higher, maybe we didn't outline a quarterly payment schedule for the applicant. I don't have any solutions, but I'm, I'm listening to everyone, I'm taking everything in, from you, Ms. Gufferson, the mayor, city attorney, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to everyone here. Thanks.
I agree with you that the worst-case scenario on this is that the matter is resolved and the applicants refuse to pay, thereby laying this on the taxpayer's lap again and undermining the deterrent purpose of preventing frivolous actions by assigning costs as they accrue.
So would you agree, Ms. Gufferson, or forgive me, Jen, that a deposit and the language you believe, which is accurate, is a deterrent or should be deterrent?
I believe that my efforts at looking into the legislative history and watching all the, watching all the last meeting, the meetings of that process and reading through all those minutes, was that these fees were supposed to serve a deterrent function and a recuperative function for taxpayers. And if we wait until the end and our applicants choose not to pay, we have failed on both, because the taxpayers bear, hold the cost, and the applicants were not deterred from the action that may or may not... And I am not asking to weigh in on whether or not this particular action is frivolous. I'm talking about the intent of the fees.
Okay.
In a vacuum.
Alderman Kilberg, then, Radecki?
Is it appropriate to ask for a log of the accruals to date?
A log of which approvals? I'm not sure.
Accruals.
Accruals, forgive me.
In other words, you know, who's keeping score here, what the expenses are? I think that if I was involved in this one way or the other, I'd want to know on a monthly basis what the tab is, because that could weigh on people's decisions. I mean, you know, I think there should be a working log of some sort showing what the, the expense against this, this proposed district would be. I mean, I think that's, that's, that's our fiduciary responsibility. Isn't it? I mean, is that a, is that a legal counsel? Is that a legal request? Is that an appropriate request?
Sure, it's an appropriate request. I mean, it's a process of how you wish to, you know, undertake the business. It's a staff request, frankly.
Okay.
But it's not certainly unreasonable.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Alderman Radecki?
I guess, you know, the arguments about if the statute is written correctly, and I understand what it would take to, to make any changes, and we shouldn't do that now and on the fly, but the application says what the application says. It's a certified application, they've agreed to it. If they don't follow the terms of that application, it negates the application, I would think. And the application says that they will pay these things as they, as they come up. So, so, I mean, isn't it incumbent upon us to make sure that people understand that? As they, you know, or are we going to, is it, is it fair to leave that to the chairman of HPC to seek the, the right legal opinion as to what that applicant, they judge the merits of the application? So, you know, I think, I think that's the crux of the matter, is that they're not complying with it the way that's written right now. And, you know, I think to be fair to everybody, we need clarity around that. So, it's, and, and I don't, I don't know that that's violating the integrity of the process. I think that's giving the benefit to the leader of that, of that group, and to the applicant. I, I think this, you know, I think if I were the applicant, I'd be very concerned at this point as to whether or not what, what the potential exposure is to me. So, it just seems, it just seems to me that it makes sense to, to get some clarity around the application and what the exposure really is going to be, because it says what it says. And there, at this point, it sounds like they're not complying with it, with the application, so...
I don't know why you'd think that. The language, and this is the first I've seen of it, because it's not in the ordinance, it simply says, "Any unused portion of the deposit will be refunded to the applicant. If additional fees are incurred above and beyond the initial amount of the application deposit, the historic landmark nomination process will not continue until such time that the applicant has paid any accrued additional expenses." So it would be on HPC or staff to advise an applicant that there's additional accrued unpaid expenses. And in the absence of that demand, that assumption, I think, is not relevant until such time a demand is made.
Before you continue, Mr. City Attorney, Jen, do you have additional copies of the materials you handed out?
These are the materials I gave last week when Mr. Radecki was not here. It's the application certification and the application instructions that I handed out last week.
Thank you. So I'm not, there's no ambiguity if it is the staff or HPC process.
It says there, "I agree to reimburse the city of Geneva for additional professional services or costs incurred by the city of Geneva."
Right.
Include that, but if you don't give them an idea of what those are, how is that not fair? How is that fair to the applicant to, you know, how do you... It clearly says that, it says that they're liable for additional legal fees, costs associated with it. They signed that, agree to that. How can we in good faith now give them an accounting of where we're at with that now? Or say that we don't owe that when the application says that? I mean, there's a, there's a bona fide dispute here that needs to be resolved by agreement.
Well, the assumption could be, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, that perhaps an inquiry was made to staff saying, "Are there any things, are there any totals yet? Is there an accrual of what's been charged back?" And the answer could very well have been, "We haven't been invoiced yet," or "We don't know." Again, I don't know that for certain, but that's just speculation. Jim still has the floor. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. That was one point I was going to make. The other is, this, this application has how many signatories on it? There's like 20 households or so?
There are five applicants who have signed the certification.
Okay, so there's five signatures on there, so to not collect those monies owed at the end would require that all five default on, on those. That seems highly unlikely. Thanks.
I thank all of you for your time in considering this, and I hope that you're right, that the HPC is watching and that they agree that the integrity of the process can be enhanced by making these accountings and having fees become accrued, because I don't think it's in the ordinary course of business to have staff working since July on a project and not have that cost accrue before March. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? New business, public comment? Brace yourselves, there's a meeting after this one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Seconded by Bruno, all in favor of adjourned the committee of the whole meeting? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is... We'll take a two-minute break and be back in 30 minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to call this special meeting of the Geneva City Council to order. Let the record show that all the council members are present. We have one item to consider this evening, and that is to consider Resolution Number 2019-19 approving a redevelopment agreement, development incentive, and reimbursement agreement between the City of Geneva and State Street Coffee LLC for Duncan at 206 East State Street. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Bruno. Questions, comments, clarifications with respect to the item on the floor? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Recording Secretary, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Nay.
Michael Clemens?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.